Good morning, Nick and Kathleen and presenters. This is the regular meeting of the Selectmen of the Town in Kanan Tuesday, January 26, 8:35 a.m. Getting started. Welcome Superintendent Lutz and everyone. Before I start, I'd like to make a comment that we will not allow people to have inappropriate photos or other things on the on there if they're not going to be on by if you're not going to be on by video. You should have your name and your affiliation only and an appropriate face picture if you choose. But so I'll give people a chance to Otherwise, you will be removed from the meeting. For we don't have the minutes for last Tuesday's meeting, so we will take that up on Thursday and public comments, members of the public are welcome to provide comments on agenda topics scheduled for review and approval. Obviously, this is a budget meeting, so there's a lot of budget topics. And any comments will be received by email only addressed to BOSdistribution@mccainscot.gov. And we will either read or post comments as received or by the end of the meeting. Next item on our agenda is the legal fees on our tablets. Nick or Kit, do you have any questions or comments on the legal fees?
Kathleen.
Kit.
Did I take it? My God.
I told you, you only have one more chance.
Kathleen, do you have any?
I don't have any questions. No, thank you.
Nick, I'll take a motion to approve the legal fees on the tablets.
Yeah, let me just pull them up, Kevin. Sorry. So, Ken, what were the fees for animal control?
I think.
Is that just litigation?
$12,000. It was litigation fees to take ownership of the puppies. I wasn't involved in that. The chief of police was involved in that.
Got it. And I see another $5,000 for the God's Acre dispute, which has brought us to $21,000 in total.
I think we're going to have a executive session on Thursday on legal matters with the town attorney. So we can discuss that on Thursday.
Yeah, I like that because that's getting to be expensive.
I have a motion to approve the.
So moved.
Second.
All favor. Okay, Selectmen's comments, I really don't have any comments. The I'll give an update tonight on COVID. We have a large reduction in our weekly cases last week down to, I think, 49. And but we're concerned about the UK variant that Yona Haven and Jackson Labs are finding in New Haven County. And obviously, that's could change the picture in a few weeks. So February, March could change drastically from what we're currently experiencing. Last would be, I think, 284 people tested in five days and for positivity rate of, I think, 1.97% or something. So in the state of Connecticut is down to 5% or just under 5% according to today's paper on a seven day rolling average. So the news is good in terms of positivity, but things could change. So. Any comments, Kathleen or Nick you wish to make?
I would just say throughout the week, and Kevin, you've received these two and Nick, you've also received just correspondence. I just say in general, a couple of inquiries that have come in from businesses, things like dry cleaners, et cetera. And, you know, we've redirected some of the inquiries in terms of when they these individuals might be considered essential workers, whether they're grocery clerks, et cetera. Jen's done a great job. Laura Budd's done a great job and just in terms of directing them. But but that's just sort of getting a lot more, and I'm sure you're all getting those as well. Lot more inquiries about vaccines. And so I don't know if we are regularly posting that on our website, Kevin, but just.
Actually, I'm I'm making another comment about vaccines because we are might be getting shortchanged versus other towns. Or at least our neighboring towns are also getting shortchanged. If we had 300 or 400 vaccines, we could administer them. We're going to administer another 100 today. That rate will take us till April just to get through the 75 year. But on the other hand, there's various places people can go to get vaccinated. We don't have to do it all in the Kanan, but Stanford Hospital fortunately is inviting people into their thousand doses a day, but even they are getting shortchanged. So there is a shortage of vaccines, obviously, just at the 75 older level right now. And we're not going to get to 65 and older or other first responders that don't do medical calls or central workers. And even some people like retail doesn't qualify as essential workers.
Right.
Food services and restaurants. And so it's going to be, people have to be patient getting into probably some of the seniors at 75 and older are getting appointments in 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 March if you go on VAMS. So we're trying hard to improve that with our clinic at Lapham. But we need more vaccines and I've written to our communicated with our state legislators that it doesn't appear to be equitable what's happening with the allocation. So. Anything else? I think the superintendent is will turn to the budget review. And I think Dr. Lussi is up with his team first off. And I Brian, I'd like to ask you, I watched a lot of half of the year of meeting last night. I had a board meeting last night, so I couldn't watch the whole thing. I suspect Kathleen and Nick probably watched it. So are familiar with what you talked about last night. I at least saw the vote and part of the discussion about early start time. So I would ask you to focus half an hour on operating, which we cannot comment on or vote on. So and then a half an hour on capital. And so just give us the the drivers on on operations. So if you could kind of give us the short version of what was discussed last night.
Sure. Be glad to.
I also want to comment, as I've said publicly, you know, you've got to give Dr. Lussi and his team a lot of credit. I mean, you know, you guys have been courageous and thoughtful and in keeping the schools open. And this has not been easy, but I we all respect you for what you've accomplished.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Thanks Kathleen and Nick. You know, it's it's great to be with you this morning. It's a little different, of course, we're not carrying in big three ring binders and hitting them out and, you know, sort of working through those. So I get the the idea around 30 minutes for each. We might actually be able to beat you on some of that, Ken. I think that's probably good news. So we thought what we do is is give a high level overview of the operating. We're glad, of course, to go as deep into any individual item or anything there that you'd like. And then really look to pivot over to capital and spend some time working through capital. Because I know that there's some always challenging decisions what a selectman has to make in a short period of time on the budget calendar around capital. So glad to have that discussion. And we're here for as long as you need us, but no longer than that for sure. So glad to glad to be able to assist us. But I I'm going to turn it over to Katrina in a brief moment. But I also want to just quickly say, you know, Kevin, to you, to others on the call. Thank you for helping everything that we've done. Really, it wouldn't be possible without the support and really working together as a team. The whether it's the the daily EOC calls that we all experienced together for months and months and months. Or, you know, the ongoing follow up. Jen and her work and everything else, I mean, the the school district, I think what we have shown more than anything else is just how how well everything works together, can work together to support one another. Whether it's supporting our youngest kids in our kindergarten classroom or seniors when we're worried about food scarcity that by, you know, when we do pull our resources together and solve the problems together. There's nothing we can't do and can't accomplish. And I think we've been showing that really, we knew it, but to live it and to experience it really is powerful. And and I'm grateful, Kevin, for your partnership and through all of that. And same goes with Board Finance, Town Council, everybody in the entire Board of Selectmen. So we're doing, we're all doing this. This is the ultimate in teamwork because we're all working every day towards the same goals. And that's it's really powerful stuff.
Sort of like being boxed. It is. It is a war and it's a marathon. So.
It is. Yep. And we, you know, you win some of the battles, you lose some of the battles here and there as we go through. And we make the best decisions that we can every day. And, you know, in the end, we know we're going to win the war. Because the one thing I think about this a lot in March and a lot recently, how, you know, the one thing that every pandemic has in common is that it ends. And when it does, people look back on the experiences and they're either proud of how they acted and the things, the decisions they made, or they're not. And I can stand, we should all be able to stand tall, knowing that, you know, as a town and as leaders throughout the town, we have made the the best decisions we could at all times for the right reasons every single time. And I think that's very powerful.
Thank you.
Kevin and Kathleen and Nick, for all of your continued service, I just echo, you know, all the things that Brian said. And Kevin, you know, appreciate your comments as well. You know, needless to say, it's been a complex year in every way. And last night, we were proud to adopt our Board of Education budget to bring forward this morning. We're confident that this budget will continue to support our district and our 4,200 students who are, you know, some of our most vulnerable citizens in this pandemic. And I think we, you know, see how important it is to stay focused on, you know, their education and all of the things that surround that in terms of their emotional well being as they move through this. So it's amazing to think that we're actually entering our third budget cycle with COVID impact. It's hard to believe, but that's where we are. And we're confident that we'll continue to implement strategies and all the things that have been implemented over the past year to really support our students and continue the great work that happens every day. Board of Education and a parent in our district, it's really incredible to see what happens every day in our schools. There are great things happening. And the ability of the district and our town to provide continued and continuity and learning and education is the most important thing we've done. And we continue to do that. And it's large in large part due to the great work of Brian, the administration, all of our teachers. And really, our nurses and our health department have entered, you know, the education world in a new and different way in such an important way this year. And I just, you know, want to commend Jen and the Health Department and the partnership with our unions and just really all around. It's it's been incredible. So I will also note that our investments over the past many years in technology has really provided a tremendous infrastructure in which we were able to scale and move forward very quickly and scale to with infrastructure networks and technology for our students to be able to support the transformation that we've seen in the past year in the level of technology adoption from software to hardware and all around. So I know our focus today is largely on capital, we'll spend time on both. But as we think about operating, I just also want to mention that we have spent a good amount of time with members of the Board of Finance and we love to do the same with Town Council in talking about how all the many ways our budget is different this year and some of the complexities with COVID and the Internal Services Fund and other things we'll soon talk about. But, you know, we look forward to continuing to partner with them and have conversations to try and, you know, figure out the best path forward for our spending over the next couple of years as a result of, you know, everything.
Thank you, Katrina, and thank you for all your hard work on the board. Penny's on and Dion is on, and I appreciate the fact that we have good partners in the Board of Education. And and congratulations too on the results you've achieved.
Back to doctors. Yep, I will. I'll pick it up from here and and just start with, as we mentioned, the the operating budget overview. And I'm going to say something that may, well, this is a little different than what I say and I've said in years past, which is in years past, we come and we talk about the importance of looking at our projected expenditures in our lines and looking at that as the most recent update to how our budget is performing when we think about building the next year's budget. But this morning, I'm going to say, given the disruptions of COVID and the ways that it has changed the the program offerings and the way and what we're able to deliver, for instance, our extracurricular activities, our athletics program, there's the arts, everything that sort of that we've been had to either suspend or scale down or change significantly as a result of COVID. If we look at a projected, those are taken out. And so what happens is, in order to just go to a full a restore of what was, and which we are intending to do later in the year, next year, it looks like a significant budget increase. So what we're looking at, what we'd like to do this morning is begin by looking at our our projected budget for next year or for this year and thinking about the the build from there going into next year. The again, typically, if we are managing and running through our budget and supporting our program as we would, the projected would be a more accurate look, but this year is different. And so looking at projected, for instance, the just the increase in athletics alone to get back to where we were is hundreds of thousands of dollars against projected because of the change in the the winter sports season, right? And what happened, the scaling back in the fall. But we are, I think we all agree that we anticipate a full, we want to get back to where we were with our athletics program, right? That's we want to have our football team, we want to have our games, we want to to have a basketball team, to have full seasons for our kids and for our community. So it's it looks like a large request against the projected, but it's not, you know, it's so we are going to look first step through the looking at the proposed the proposed Board of Ed's budget for next year with the what we had budgeted for this year. And if you'll recall, the budget itself, it was developed before COVID was impacting us in any significant way that we knew. You know, we developed it last year, it was approved by the Board of Ed in January. Board of Selectmen saw at the end of January, Board of Finance in February. And it was really just those last couple of meetings with the Town Council where where we approved that that we were becoming aware and we we had just closed our schools on March 11th to 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 begin our remote learning on the 13th. So the this budget was prepared and approved through the different bodies to maintaining those programs. So with that, I'm going to put up an exhibit if you don't mind. And just take a quick walkthrough. And this was shared last night with the whoops, wrong one, with the Board of Education. Let me jump to the other one. My apologies. I'll get back to that other one in a moment. Let's see, that's what I would like. Okay. Is that clear? Great. So quickly, again, this is the operating budget and we'll get into capital and we'll use the actual budget documents even more as we get into capital. And I think that you'll agree that this was not a year to spend hours and hours and hours putting together separate slides when we we have a budget document that we can just as easily walk through and talk through. So we're going, I'll get to the document in a moment. But looking at the the budgeted amount for 2021, it was 90,880,629. If we look at the so we start with that and then we build from there, okay, into our our the Board of Ed's proposed 2122. And as we to build into the new that this is the number for the proposed 95424. And this is all detailed in the book and I'll take, I'll be glad to take it in a moment. But if you to get to the number, we are anticipating just under $1 million of expenses for COVID next year. And the we just spoke briefly, Board of Selectmen just spoke briefly about the vaccines. I had the good fortune to be the superintendent representative on the Rules Committee, which is the state's Department of Education and the Department of Public Health. We meet weekly and we have been doing that since August. And last night, even in conversation with Dr. Carter, the state epidemiologist, Lynn Sosa, the deputy and others, they were sharing the timelines on the statewide rollout. And while Connecticut appears to be doing relatively well on a national basis, you know, in the top 10 as far as the percentage of population being vaccinated, the the anticipation, they're anticipating frontline and teacher, which includes teachers and school staff, being sometime in March that they can begin to schedule their appointments. So with that timeline and sorry, and understanding of the need for the virus penetration to have a meaningful impact and with the the concerns around the variants that we're seeing, and I know we're, you know, I don't want to go down that birdwalk, which, you know, was the world we're living in with with COVID here. But understanding what that what those the impacts may be from that, I think that this is a conservative estimate around what we may need. But we don't want to, we want to be conservative, knowing that if we needed more, the town, the Board of Finance and others have been really great partners for us. So if we have to to go back and to to do other things and if COVID continues to impact our schools in in more significant ways, I'm confident that the resources will be available to to keep our schools functioning. So the the changes in the budget, again, it's about a little under $1 million for COVID expenses. The contribution to the Internal Services Fund at 1.4. And then there are changes for the start and end time for schools. This is the the same proposal that came forward a year ago to the Board of Selectmen and and all the town bodies. We are looking at a midyear implementation on this. So we, again, understanding that COVID is likely to impact us to start the year, we feel much more confident saying that we would continue to work through those issues, continue to discuss and communicate with the community about the start and end times and look at a midyear implementation. And by mid, that doesn't mean the 92nd day necessarily, but sometime in this in the latter half of the year where it makes where it works best for for most. Other changes in the budget, it's 1.7, which is the all in combined number. So as we look at the the overall change, well, let me go to those other changes for a brief moment. That 1.7 million on the other changes, 2 million of that is salary and step increases. And then all of the rest is the actually brings us down a little into to get to that 1.7, that number there. So you can see the overall, the budget increase itself is really driven significantly by those three factors. And again, we'll get a little more specific in a moment. I'm not going to, I'm brave, but not brave enough to walk through the Internal Services Fund contribution. So I'm going to let the the expert do that for us. And then we can get into the budget document if you like. And Dr. Keating, if you're more comfortable going to the budget document to do that, I'm glad to do that.
I think this is great. So.
Go ahead. Before you start, I just I just like to comment that perhaps the Internal Services Fund is the most interesting thing that what a selectman would like to hear about. Because in talking to the Board of Finance, they're going to make a proposal, we go to a single Internal Service Fund. And Larry Kirshner, our consultant, is on on call for it now to listen to your presentation. Obviously, there'll be a much more extensive presentation before the Board of Finance in in February. But I just want to preface that this this is probably, you know, the issue really is in health. Health is health and really should not be viewed as part of your operating budget or the town's operating budget. And we both self insure, we both try to manage the the cost of health across employees as best we can. And but I just want to preface your remarks with that.
Sure. So the Internal Services Fund has been instrumental, I think, in saving the town significant funds over, you know, the years we're not insured in terms of a premium based program. We're self insured with stop loss insurance for to put gaps for the the risks associated with the program. And over the years, the Board of Education, I think, has done a masterful job at changing and shifting all of our staff to a high deductible plan. And the savings associated with that over time, over a five or six year period are very evident and will provide the Board of Finance with, you know, a look back of five to six years and then a potential look forward based on the program. Last year, we had the opportunity to reduce the operating budget in taxes by utilizing fund balance that had accrued over a two year period. And it enabled us to reduce the budget on a claims basis by 2.1 million. And then the shift in the funding for the stop for the gap went to the town. We had carried 60% and the town carried forward 40 and we shifted that to a 4060. So last year, our budget was reduced, our contribution from the operating budget was reduced significantly. Towards the end of last fiscal year, the last three months of last fiscal year, we realized significant reductions in claims due to COVID. And in addition to what we had projected to end the year with, which was $2.2 million as an offset to this current year's budget, an additional 2.2 million was realized based on COVID related avoidance of claims and services. So moving into this year, that that amount of money is on the balance sheet currently. When we went into projecting out, there were a few variables that we needed to take in take into consideration. And the first part of that is reprojecting out this current year. On the revenue side, we do expect to have $241,000 less in revenues. And the primary reason for that is that the Food Service Fund was going to contribute 200,000. But financially, they're not, it's not in a position currently to do that because of the impact on our program due to COVID. And it's primarily at the high school and which not didn't necessarily carry the program but was a the primary source of source of revenue for the program. So we can't anticipate that revenue into this current year. And then expenditures are coming in slightly lower, and that's a combination of claimants. We have one claimant that's very high and we're drawing down stop loss premium or stop loss reimbursement for that. So we took that into consideration. And the next section here is really Joe's section. And I'm going to take off my glasses because I can see better. So he went through this with the board last week. And just to go down the actuarial experience factors, he's using a 1.22, seems very reasonable. And if you take that on claims, it's $161,000. The new piece here is the actuarial COVID adjustment. And Larry would probably have be able to explain this much better than I can. But if I, you know, if I understand Joe correctly, this is a number that he developed based on avoided services during COVID. And it's a factor that's going to be put into place that will basically increase the base of our claims by 1.2 million. The next is the traditional trend factor he's using on an annualized basis close to 9%. And that's 1.9 million to almost 2 million. And we do believe, and Larry can speak to this better as well, that the stop loss insurance is going to increase based on this large claimant that we have in our mix. Then everything else is going up by about $368,000. The interesting thing about our particular plan is that it doesn't start on July 1st. We have a September 1st through August 30th plan year. And it really complicates the way that we budget because of the fact that as we start to develop these numbers in budget season, we only have two months of claims experience for the current year. So the look back is basically into the prior year in terms of the estimating claiming. And as we progress, as we have in the past with the budget cycle and the budget process, we have more months of claims and it enables us to improve on the numbers. So what happened last week was Joe had the claims for December through December. So we had a full four months of claims and we were able to reduce our request by almost $300,000. And we expect that that's going to happen as we go through the budget cycle, that these claims that are claims, we've had a very good month of January. I don't know if it's claims avoidance due to COVID, but we're well underneath projections for the month of January compared to November and December where we were over. So these are, you know, it's a moving target, it's volatile this year. But I think one of the things that we're going to propose and talk to the Board of Finance about is that, you know, we've had claim stabilization around $12.7 million for the last five years. If you average out all those years, we had a few slightly lower, a few slightly higher. The claims projections that you're going to see in the budget book are at 14 million, which is a significant increase over the average of 1.3 million and happens to be close to the COVID adjustment. So we're going to talk to them about a strategy to to look at this as a flat claims year, I'm moving into next year. So so budget the same amount for claims next year as we have in this year's budget. And then as we go through the budget process, continue to update the numbers and. And, and really work with them in terms of a strategy to fund this up if needed after the budget cycle. And the reason for that is that we do not write our stop-loss insurance until June. And that's outside the budget cycle. So our maximum exposure really is at the attachment point for our aggregate stop-loss. So that's the claims base that would, that we would need to use to actually fund this fund appropriately. And in the past, we've had to do it off of estimate numbers. But as we move into next year and we have the number, and if it's $12.7 million, then our budget should be fine in terms of the funding. If the underwriters put it at 13.5, we may have a shortfall of 800,000. So we're going to be wanting to work with the Board of Finance and the Town Council to come up with a strategy that appropriately funds this fund, doesn't overfund it, but doesn't underfund it as well. I hope that makes sense. But, you know, it's very hard.
Joan, I'll just add, that's a, that's an awesome summary you just gave right there. You're absolutely right on COVID claim suppression is a, every, every group that I work with has absolutely seen, for the most part, a significant reduction mainly in Q2, later, latter Q2 and early Q3, you know, when we were all on lockdown of suppression of elective procedures. So absolutely, there should be an actuarial, a claims adjustment to reflect the fact that that's in your experience, and that's why you're enjoying a surplus this year, as, as you mentioned. So absolutely, you're, you're right on about the stop-loss. I'm going to talk more about that as it, as, you know, it comes around to my turn on the town plan, is that we are killing the reinsurer this year. The last few years, the town beat up the reinsurer pretty good, and the board had good experience. This year, both have some pretty bad experience with regards to the large claims. And some of these claims are going to be ongoing. So, you know, we'll talk more about that as we get to it. So certainly, you know, the stop-loss adjustment, we're, we're going to see a, a stop-loss, a tougher stop-loss renewal this year. And I think your point's well taken, just, you know, obviously, I'll just, you know, comment quickly. And, and we've talked about this, you know, this, this is the, this is the problem, and, and you know this better than anybody, is that you're, you're having to build so much trend into these, or inflation into your projections because of the budget process. So invariably, the, the, you know, line 18 there is, is, is the issue. So, right, so like, as you just said, you've, you're historically building, you know, in this case, $2 million of inflation in there. And your plan isn't trending at historical or industry norms. A lot of the reason is because of the steps that you guys have done, which have been fantastic, and we've done as well on the town side, which is moving people into high deductible health plans and HSEs. So, you know, Joe there is using a 9% annual, and I haven't talked to Joe about this, but, you know, he's, he's using a 9% annual trend factor, which is industry norm. But the reality is that high deductible health plans are probably, you know, looking at some of the actuarial data from, you know, independent sources and things like that, high deductible health plans are probably trending closer to 2% to 4% nationally. And that's, that's why you're enjoying, you know, one of the reasons why you're enjoying some, some surpluses, because you're, 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 you're getting the effect of the changes that you've made in the experience betterment, if that's a correct word. But for the budget process, as you astutely pointed out, you're having to build this massive amount of inflation into, you know, normal underwriting. But as you astutely pointed out, your claims have been relatively flat. So there's no reason, you know, from my perspective, not to adopt what you just said, which is to kind of look at it and adopt more of a case-specific experience over the last few years. And it, as, as, that's more realistic with how you've been historically running versus this exercise every year where, and, and again, this is normal underwriting, this is the world that I live in every day. Every year, it's like, okay, we're sitting here in November and December, and we now have to build in, you know, this massive amount of inflation into this projection because of the budget process. But when the, the, the claims or the inflation doesn't materialize, then you have these surpluses, as you know, and, and that's what you did last year. You took down your fund because you've been realizing these surpluses, so 100%.
Hey Larry, does, does the timing of the cover? Because, you know, it's, it's disjointed with respect to the budget year itself. Because we're talking about two, I think, two years, two, two months of lost experience that you got to project from is, is.
I don't think it's material.
You don't, you don't think it's material?
No, I mean, you know, we're projecting, you know, our, our plan is on a fiscal year basis.
Yeah.
Their plan is September, it's, 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 it's two months, it's, it's not material. Now, the, the, the problem is that, as I said, that they're having to come before you with, you know, data, a, as Joan just said, they've, they've updated it through December, so they picked up 300,000. Their January is running really well, so when Joe Purgen updates the projection with data through January, it's going to get even better. So the problem is really row 18 is that, that the, 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 you know, the building in of $2 million of inflation for these claims into your budget becomes problematic. Because as I said, and, and as Joan alluded to, the plan isn't trending that way. So, so I think her point's well taken in terms of developing a mechanism, like, we're not going to build $2 million of trend in here. We'll build in a lower number, but we'll look at this thing. And as we get closer to the finalization of the fiscal year, we'll ha, and, and, and now we have data through, let's say, March, you can do a better, better projection. The problem is, we're, we're having to project these things out way into the future. And we have, a, a, and we have to use industry, you know, standard inflation. And that's really the, the crux of the whole issue you have, I think, in that, because then you have this corridor, and I know I'm kind of moving off to the side here, you have this corridor agreement funding with the BOE. So you're starting at a higher number. It's like, it's just the law of large numbers. So it's like, as Joan said, you know, the, the, the projections have been like 14 million in claims, and they've been significantly under that. But the corridor then is on top of the 14 million, and you have to budget for that. So it's, it's, I, I think, i- if I hear Joan correctly, you're, that, that proposal is absolutely down the right path of what you ultimately want to do.
Larry, one of the things we've talked about is perhaps taking both Internal Service Funds and making it one, and looking at it every six months and making adjustments rather than this forward forecasting. Because right now, the, the Board of Ed request for the health insurance is 17.5% increase. And that's kind of a crazy number until you understand it. But it's, you know, so I think what the Board of Finance would like to do, and they'll discuss this in February, is let's, let's just separate health altogether from operating. So.
Well, yeah. Well, that's obviously an account, you know, they'll leave that to you guys, that's an accounting issue. And I think what Joan is kind of alluding to there, though, may, you know, even if you bifur, you know, keep them bifurcated, that ultimately you would get to a similar result.
Right.
By, by doing it.
Can we just let Joanne finish what she wanted to talk about in terms of the Internal Services Fund?
Yeah, go ahead, talk soon.
We could come and speculate about, we want to go there. But Joanne, are you, are you done on this particular page?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would just say that in closing, that, you know, we're not proposing, you know, of course, I, I can't speak for the board, always open for a conversation. But as I see it, the board's moving forward with an individual bifurcated fund for the Board of Education. And the question just becomes, what is the most realistic number in terms of budgeting to fund that appropriately? And is there a mechanism in place to safeguard it if, in fact, claims do escalate due to some COVID factor? And I think that's what we want to work on. And if we can get there on both sides of the town, it really doesn't matter if it's all in one pot or if it's separated. You know, it's, the number should be the same combined, so.
Okay, so that sounds like a bit of a advanced, I, I spent three years, you know me, I'm a nerd, but, so it sounds like, if I understand you correctly, that the Board of Ed is open to, you're open to thinking potentially about a combined plan, if you will, town and, and Board of Ed, potentially having to maybe change up the, the start dates in terms of the insurance plan, for instance, July 1st instead of September 1st, is that something you're open to, or?
Yeah, there's a lot of complications with that in terms of the unions and the deductible, employer portion of the deductible. So it's not as easy and straightforward as one might think.
Yeah.
My preference would always be to have both the fiscal year and the plan year the same.
Right.
But unfortunately, it wasn't that way when I started here. And there was reasons, I'm sure, that were good reasons for doing it. But regardless, I do think that we just need to work together to come up with what the right number is. And then go from there, and moving forward, have a plan in place, an agreement in place that says, okay, if we need additional funding, this is how you get it.
Right.
And so that we work together on that.
Okay, great.
Brian and Joanne, do you have anything further you'd like to do on the operating health side?
I don't know, can we reclaim our time, or? I think, again, we're, we are certainly, what, all I'll do is just, and this will transition us right into the Capitol. I'm going to just show, can't hear, there we go. The budget document itself. What we did this year was spend the time to create really a, a virtual budget document that's interactive and easily navigated. And so, and I'll, we'll get to the Capitol in a moment. But online, we have the budget document itself for anyone to download, and they're welcome to go through, and that enables us to keep it updated as we go through the process. If numbers improve or change in insurance, for instance, we can go right online and, and make the adjustments as we need to, as it goes through the different approval process. So we can do the same. What we've done is create a table of contents in the PDF that allows you to quickly and easily jump from section to section to really navigate it quickly. And what we have, just as we go into it, is the, is of course, a high-level overview. But then we also go lead with a staffing plan that covers all of our, all staff, certified, non-certified. Work through it. Our financial summaries and the sheet that we just went through, we will also be inserting into here so that it's, it's easy. The, the why the budget changed is the, also known as the budget crib notes, really just goes sort of dollar-for-dollar, shows why each, any specific account has gone up or down. And then we go into the individual buildings, and each building starts with a staffing plan, and then gets into the, the actual resources and dollars. So it really, you, you start at a high level, but drills down. As I was listening to Dr. Keating and Larry talking, I was thinking about Joe's example of the hurricane model in insurance forecasting, where the further out you are, the wider the cone, and as you get closer, it gets narrow, more and more narrow. Of course, my only other, other thought on that is the, the volatility that COVID has introduced into our insurance, just like everything else, is unlike anything we've experienced before. So as we look and look forward, we want to certainly work together as we're problem-solving and what makes the most sense. But we also just want to be aware that the, the challenges of COVID are unique in that, you know, when we, when we're through it, we anticipate getting back into the rhythm that was, was a positive rhythm, I think, for our insurance and for the other things that were happening. So it's, it certainly gives us, or presents unique challenges, or challenges that we haven't experienced before. Same with the, you know, each of the other areas in the operating. Each will have, it has a narrative to sort of summarize, a staffing plan, and then into the budget itself. So really, the, I just wanted to briefly show you the, the layout of the document and invite you to, you know, take a deep dive into that whenever you'd like. The, we do spend the time updating the narratives each year. For instance, what Dr. Keating was talking about with the insurance is, you know, you could get into a deeper understanding, develop a deeper, deeper understanding by taking the time to read through kind of the summary and the, the mechanisms that are available in that Internal Services Fund for Savings for the Town, some of the things that we've done with plan design. So I wanted to, to do that.
All right, that's great. Let me just, before you move to Capitol, that, you know, the
Sure.
The Board of Selectmen, that's, we're not interested, but we neither vote nor comment on the operating budget. And the, and the, on the other hand, the health is something the Board of Finance will focus on this year because it's really, we both, on the town side and Board of Ed's side, saved a huge amount of money over the last 10 years with being self-insured. But we are an insurance company, and the question is, how do we appropriately reserve so we don't look at those numbers in a budget that, that looks like they're out of line? They're not out of line, but, but we can perhaps manage the appearance more by how we, how we reserve for them. And so that, so with that, I'd like you to transition to Capitol.
So just Kevin, just one, one last, though, however, and I don't want to take up too much time. I, I do have a couple of questions on, on the operating budget. And in years past, I think you've allowed us to submit questions and so forth, so we will, we will not take a lot of time here. So we may, if any of us have any questions, we submit them to Dr. Keating, and, and I guess we'll hear back before we give a final approval on the budget. Totally understand that we're not doing any sort of line-by-line items, but it just sort of helps me in context in terms of the full budget of operating, and then the more specific items in, in Capitol. So if you don't mind, I'd like to be able to do that.
It's our pleasure, if that's all right, yeah, sure.
Just, just for the record, you know, prior to Kevin being on the Board of Education, we used, being on the Board of Selectmen, we used to actually go through lines, as you remember, Brian. I don't think we need to do that, but like Kathleen, I like the ability to, to have, you know, a few questions with respect to the operating budget.
Yep, you're certainly welcome to send them over, and we could respond in writing, or I'm glad to get on the phone and talk things through as well, of course. Okay. So with that, why don't we jump over to Capitol? And Dr. Keating, if you would like.
So the biggest item in our Capitol budget request this year is funding for re-roofing the high school roof, replacing that roof. We're currently finalizing the specifications for that project. The budget that you have before you has it taking place in two phases over a two-year period. However, we're going out to bid with two options for all the bidders. One is a two-phase project, and one is one phase. And there's implications for both in terms of operating the building. But we want to get the pricing in to see if it's going to be less expensive doing a one-phase project. And the reason for that is just the setup, having, you know, a contractor come in and do two setups is I, we're thinking is going to add to the price. But we want to really drill down and find out exactly what the best option is for us, both operationally and financially. So I just want to throw that out, if we can go back up to the top, right? So what you're going to see here is engineering services for the high school roof, 100,000. Once we get into construction, any kind of professional services will be absorbed by that budget. But leading into the project, we are going to need structural engineering services and additional design services, so that's where the 100,000 is coming in. Engineering services, we have projects in here for boiler replacements and a few other projects. So we've put an allocation of 50,000 for that. And then we also have energy conservation projects for CHP where we've allocated funds. Moving down to the, the individual schools, we've had a, a painting program in place for several years right now. It's been a huge benefit for the schools, they look fresh and new and clean. And we would like to continue doing that, and these budgets are the same as they have been in the past. We would like to continue and finish the East parking lot repaving program. We had put it on pause last year because the projects that we had going on at that school, we had the roof replacement going on at East, a lot of exterior repointing work and facade work. So we put it on pause from last year. And then you're going to see something new for both East and South this year. And it's upgrades to the PA systems within the schools. And the reason why we put this in here is that it's a it's a significant um, cost each year, it has been, just to repair rather than to refurbish. So we've probably spent over the last few years a good fifty thousand dollars in these schools, and we felt that we, if we could just go and uh, refurbish them, it would be um, extremely helpful on the operational side. And furthermore, it's a primary safety issue for us, this is how we communicate in a crisis, so um, those um, projects you'll see at both east and south. Moving down to south, we have painting, um, again playground stair repair, this has been there for a few years and the walkway that goes around the rear of the building into the courtyard, uh, we're working with Tiger for pricing on that. Um, and I mean, you all know, he's just awesome to work with, he's been great um, in terms of getting things done for us, so um, we'll rely on his pricing and coordination for these projects. We are asking to replace the boiler at south, it is at the end of useful life, if not beyond right now, and it's the first of three boiler replacement projects you're going to see coming up, uh, this year we have, we're going to finish out Saks, we're going to ask for south, and then um, in subsequent years, we'll do east and west, and then we will be um, boiler replacement free until the high school comes up in about 10 years. Oh, you see the PA system there as well. Moving down to west, um, we have the painting project there, and again, this parking lot uh, renovation has been delayed several years now, and it really is in desperate need, and I know the reasons, and we understand the reasons for delaying it due to um, the uncertainty with the gas um, coming up to West School, the natural gas coming up to West School, but we do need to keep this on the radar screen. Um, Tiger informed Dan yesterday that it doesn't look like he would be getting it in this coming year, this summer. Uh, but we do need it to be patched pretty um, significantly if we're not going to do the work this summer.
Sorry, can you just explain that, he's, he was not going to get it into what, the budget or the actual?
I think it into his rep- repaving cycle, and it could be because of the natural gas, I, you know, I'm not sure, I didn't have the conversation with him.
Sorry, Joan, the natural gas is not going to come up this year, that was why we were looking at push it off. It's not my paving schedule, it's got to do with every source's schedule on bringing the gas up Ponus Ridge to the school itself.
All right, thank you. Um, and hopefully we can get it patched on all the big holes that we have in there on this summer. Um, okay, moving down. We had a two-phase project um, currently with uh, boiler replacement and the Cogen plant at Saks. Uh, very important to us is replacing the, the two boilers that are remaining, we have one going in right now, and then we'll have the two um, next year, and that would complete the boiler plant. And I think there's more discussion to take place on the Cogen plant at Saks, we have phase one going in right now, that's going to be uh, opened at the bid, if it hasn't already come in, and evaluated and um, constructed this year. Whether or not we go to a phase two, I think there's more discussion to take place on that. Um, there was a suggestion at the last advisory committee that we shift those funds over to the high school and start a Cogen at the high school. So we're going to have to do a cost benefit analysis on that. And then painting for Saks. Um, we're going to finalize the repaving at the high school. Uh, phase one of the roof replacement we just talked about, and the painting. So the five point seven, five point eight million, the most significant uh, project here is the three point five for the roof.
And Dr. Keating, just uh, for clarity, for, for my sake, we mentioned that this, the three point five million for the roof is if we have it in two phases, but we are for a total of seven, but we're also looking at if we were to do it in one phase, would we save significant money, which then would, would change that three point five. But not up to seven, you know, per, perhaps it'd be something south of that, and then we'd have to make a decision.
And the last two bids that we went out on, both south and east came in twenty-five percent below what was budgeted six years ago in the study, so we're hopeful that these numbers will come down as well. We have a very good design professional working on these roofs and uh, he puts together a very tight bid, we have very few change orders, very few, most of them have to do with solar readiness.
And I know the Board of Selectmen knows this, but when something comes in below the budget, that money goes back to the general fund, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the bonding is reduced, the amount of bondings.
Right, right.
And we're putting it for, uh, we're staying with our replacement cycle for sped vehicles, one of them will be a wheelchair van this year, and then we'll have our wheelchair van set for a few years now. Probably won't see another one for another six or seven years. And of course, our technology lease. And just to piggyback on what Katrina said, this lease program was never more valuable than it was this past year. It gave us the ability to leverage our funds and really provide devices to our students for remote learning in a way that um, I know many of my counterparts around the state were not able to do. And we were able to get a huge shipment in for our IPAs, or one of our significant shipments in prior to the start of school, and that enabled us to leverage a lot of addition, that, a lot of equipment that was then um, available until we got our Chromebooks in in December. So this program has been extremely helpful and valuable to the district, and we're very fortunate to have it and thankful.
And I'll just add, just simply on top of that, not just this year, I mean, every year, but last year, uh, the fact that we were able, we closed on Wednesday, the 11th, and we were remote teaching by Friday, the 13th. That is in part thanks to the resources we had through the lease that we redeployed in order to set up and to, to get things ready to go, so uh, it is it has been a, a significant leverage point for us to problem solve and to, to succeed.
Yeah, and we went one-to-one K eight as opposed to the, the cart system that we had in place, and we were able to push it out over the summer, which was key for us. I'm sorry, Ca- Kathleen.
Oh no, that's okay, I didn't mean to interrupt anyway, um, thank you for this, this is very helpful, and I'm just curious, I, I attended one of the, I guess, the most recent um, Board of Selectmen's um, Building Advisory Committee and got to listen to um, a lot of the work and planning that's going into uh, the solar and the Cogen um, repl- suggestions, and uh, so I find that interesting, I just, if you can help me understand how it uh, all works in together, I know you've got uh, budgeting some engineering service costs, I presume that's going to, for instance, a hundred thousand for the proposed um, roof at the high school. How does, how do you interact with Tiger on both the engineering piece of that as well as the actual budget piece for actually going out for bid on the, on the roof and so forth? Is, is that a real integrated plan, just, does the left side know what the right side's doing in terms of the whole engineering plan tied with the actual project itself?
Well, from our perspective, with regards to the roof, um, we handled that project at the, at the school level. And a few years ago, when we got into these, the roof projects, and there was these big budgets put together, these estimates years ago, for roof replacement, but uh, we didn't have funding prior to the, to the year it was going to be implemented to actually develop the specifications, do the study, the engineering study, and then develop the specifications and go out to bid on it, prior to the budget being set. So we started doing that several years ago before we went out with south, and so that we were able to time it in a way that, when the budget was adopted, we had a hard number, we had a good number, we had a bid number. And so that's, that's how we've run these projects, we do have uh, services for our engineering designer uh, throughout the project, and we also hire a clerk of the works to monitor the daily, you know, the daily uh, project. So they've run very well, I mean, we've been able to save significant amounts of money, I think the projects are good, solid projects. Uh, we're put, replacing twenty-year roofs with thirty-year roofs, yeah, very marginal cost, and we're making the roofs solar ready. And we went through, um, we bid it out, this past year, we bid out jointly with the, um, the town for both west and Saks, and we were able to reduce the price, you know, and, and reduce to, to that suggestion, so um, there is interface, but we do run the projects, uh, we have a vested interest in assuring that these projects are operated and run in a way that does not interfere with the operation of the school, and that's key for us. And we know how to do it, and so we, you know, we've done this for many years, um, and um, I think they've benefited the town.
That said, I would presume you'd welcome the, the more indirect, you know, sort of uh, advice, if you will, guidance and so forth involving uh, DPW in terms of that engineering piece, or are they completely cut out until the actual project comes online?
Well, they're, they're really not, um, and Tiger, I don't want to speak for you, you, you have your own um, area of responsibility, but you know, this is, we, we are stewards of the schools. Um, if Tiger can lend an expertise on a roof for us, we'll take it, you know, we're open to listening. Um, you know, for sure, it, he gives us um, great service with regards to the repaving in the exterior of the buildings and uh, without, without a blink of an eye, you know, no, no issues whatsoever, so um, that's how we run here, that's how the town operates, and we have our areas where we take care of things, but we certainly collaborate when we can.
Joanne, I'd like to, I think with the, the question that Kathleen was trying to get at was, eh, eh, we're not appropriating money uh, as a separate budget item that is coming out of the general fund for the uh, for the engineering services, those services are really rolled into the bonding of the project.
Right.
So that uh, eh, eh, the real question is, um, you know, who should design and control a project, um, and I think the Board of Finance is going to um, take up the idea of having a the, the, the advisory committee has been very helpful to try to uh, collaborate and work more closely together, but the, the major capital projects really require um, a lot of oversight and expertise that um, over time, I think the eh, eh, it might be more beneficial if the town has more of that expertise, because we do roofs, we do boilers, we do we do all the major capital projects on the town side, and trying to duplicate those, 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 those talents in, in both, both sides probably is not, not the best, most efficient, efficient way to, to approach this, and uh, you know, whether we do it through an MOU, or whether we do it through a clear understanding that the, the funds are being appropriated for capital project, the town owns the buildings, and um, so major capital projects um, should have, have more oversight or, or perhaps actual um, implementation by the town side with um, uh, engineers internally or hires from the outside that that would work with the Board of Education to, to uh, to understand the requirements and understand the scheduling, but to have more, more town site control, so I think that's what you, you're probably going to hear from the Board of Finance in, in February.
Well, we certainly are, are glad to go into that, have that conversation, you know, I think that uh, the history in Connecticut of towns and boards of ed, you know, working together and uh, certainly stewardship over the buildings above, or boards of ed and town and capital projects, there's been um, you know, long, long conversations and some different decisions that have that have been made through the years, so we certainly can welcome the, we do welcome the discussion with the Board of Finance to, you know, to uh, figure, figure this out and continue to work together, you know, I do, Joanne mentioned, and I, I completely agree, Tiger's a, a great partner for us, and uh, you know, if there are ways that make good sense, we certainly want to do that, um, the, the piece around the, the stewards of the building, we certainly take that responsibility very seriously, uh, and understanding that the, the work that we do like so, out of roof replacement, for instance, is mission critical, and we've all known school districts that have not been able to open um, after a holiday break or after the summer because the roof isn't ready and isn't done, and you know, school can, you know, a month can evaporate in a school year if these projects aren't done at certain times, or don't hit certain benchmarks and deadlines, which you know, is why we um, we take them very, very seriously, the, you know, we might be able to get around certain things, but uh, things like a roof or some other uh, you know, essential capital items, the, the responsibility for getting those schools open and running and on time is land squarely on me, you know, and the administration and the Board of Ed and the team here, so um, there's a lot of responsibility and accountability with that, so we're glad to, glad to have the discussion and and see uh, you know, see if there's a path forward that makes sense for all sides.
Be, be fortunate, Nick, before we turn to questions for you, I'd like to mention two other things, one, could we take a look at the five-year capital? And in that connection, I don't know if you're using, you know, we, we, we spent money a few years ago on the town side to do a complete inventory of the needs of our, our, our buildings with facility, so that we have, we have um, long-term analysis as to what has to be replaced, three years, five years, 10 years, 15 years from now. Do you have that right now and, 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 and I think the Board of Finance is going to be interested in, in this as to how we plan for these projects over years, so if you could just quickly run through the five-year, and then also answer the question about what tool do you use?
Sure, I mean, we, the, the Board of Education had hired Silver Pettercelli back in 2014 to do the, the extensive study of the school district, and there's um, a well-documented binder of all the projects with the timing, and we had that updated two years ago um, through VanZel, and they came in and did, really focused in on our mechanicals uh, primarily, but uh, we do have, so this plan is based on, for, you know, the professional recommendations from those two firms. Um, but you will see going forward, um, eh, it's hard for me to see the document because this block is in my way, but um, all the projects have been laid out, we have planned projects, uh, you're going to see as you go through the school's deferred projects and new projects, we label them uh, for the boards, and we uh, provide descriptions of each of the projects that we have going on. We do feel that these projects right here um, are the most important. We do have timelines for projects as well, so in other words, looking out, um, you know, the, the town twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago, did full upgrades to the three elementary schools, so they were renovated, you had new roofs, new boilers, new um, so on and so forth, so they're coming due right now, and you're going to see those projects similar in all of the schools, all three elementary schools going across. There's also other uh, projects such as floor tile replacement that really does need to be done, if you walk into the schools, you're going to see that there's a lot of patchwork type of tiling, especially over at Saks and the elementary schools, and it's just worn and needs to be done, it's very expensive to do these types of projects, so you're going to see those as you go through. Um, boiler replacements, we've talked about. Um, the fire alarm systems throughout the schools are due, they're ready to be upgraded. They're old and uh, we keep them serviced every single year, we have contracts to do that, but they do need to be overhauled in the near future. Carpeting is getting tired throughout the schools. Um, I'm not a fan of ta- uh, uh, carpeting in schools, to be honest with you, but there's certain areas like media centers and offices where people want carpeting, and you know, once, a lot of foot traffic in those areas, after 20 years, they do need to be replaced. Um, and then you can just go down, you're going to see energy conservation projects. Uh, we've done a lot and will continue to work on energy conservation. We're very interested in um, the planetarium, as you know, so you're going to see that on the plan. And just a lot of uh, you know, the Cogen here is in at one point two million for next year at the high school. You know, we really need to design that to see what it's going to come out to, but if you read through the plan, you'll see that it's pretty consistent um, in terms of what the needs are and the timing of all of the systems that are coming due um, just as a, a lifecycle type of a, a planning system.
Joanne, could you just scroll back up to the top, is, are the engineering services in the district, are they, are they the, are they appropriated funds from the general fund, or are they they rolled into the bond project?
They're rolled in, yeah, to the bond. And we, you know, we
I believe, Joanne, that if I'm wrong, if I'm correct, that doing it in this way, we essentially, we build in the engineering services, the, the budget prior to generally the, the project itself. Right, so that the, and then when we bring the project forward, we have the hard numbers because we've done the engineering, and it's gone out to bid. Uh, so the timing is sort of one year be the, the study and the, the RFP, whatever, then the next year is the project itself with the cost.
Yeah, and my only other question on the five-year plan is, is um, I thought we were going to try to do the high school CHP next year, and you're putting it off till twenty-two, twenty-three?
Yeah, eh, we have always had it in that year, um, that's been the plan year, uh, we were going to take care of Saks first and then go to the high school. Uh, and I think we just need to get together in terms of a, a team and have a conversation about uh, the planning between Saks and the high school with regards to CHP. At the last advisory committee, you know, quite frankly, we, I learned right on, and as I said, you know, I learned on the, the meeting that um, we were not going to do solar, but we were going to do CHP, and that is contrary to what we've been talking about for a couple of years now. So we need to, we do need to get on the same page with this, you know, we have to be on the same page. And we can't be learning about things in an open meeting that we haven't discussed. Um, so this is, you know, if, if the town wants to push it up a year, you know, that's fine with us. But we need to understand, uh, what the plan is.
Well, I think to some extent, Joanne, you know, last year COVID delayed a lot of things, but I, I don't, you know, there's no reason why Saks can't get done in the current fiscal year with CHP. And I don't think the decision on solar was to defer things. It was, it was whether roofs were ready. So, and whether we, and whether or not we can get Xerxes from the, from the, who gives the bureau, um, or ever source. Um, so anyway.
Yeah, there is a cost benefit analysis, uh, with solar. As you know, we have a PPA, so there's no capital outlay. And even without a Z rack, it might be more financially, uh, beneficial than put, you know, doing a capital outlet lay for CHP, um, to this extent. So it's just getting the analysis done. So it's an informed decision, I guess is my point.
Anyway, I'd like to turn back to Nick and, uh, Kathleen to say whether there's other questions on capital. I think we're coming up on our hour.
Just one request, if you wouldn't mind, Joanne. Um, you do a great budget comparison, five-year look back on the operating page 19. So if we could do the same thing for, uh, the capital. So we're looking at a proposal for this coming year, 6.5 million, uh, the year after 8.8 million. Wondering if it might be helpful also just to sort of compare what we're, we've done in terms of capital budgeting in the prior, uh, years as well. We, we're doing a look forward, but a look back might also be helpful.
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
Nick?
And we can use the dollars, um, spent as we get, you know, the actuals. Yep.
Correct.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. I, I, I'd like to see, looking backwards, the original request for the capital. And then what was ultimately approved?
Okay.
Or spent?
Spent, yeah.
Or spent, correct.
Spent, okay, okay.
That'd be helpful.
You're going to send us back into some binders.
No, but you know, there were years, uh, I mean, where, um, you know, you saw significant cuts in capital expenditures. And I think if you go back to 2008, 2009, for obvious reasons that were, you know, global economic issues that, that played into that. But I, yeah, I, I'd just like to see, you know, the extent to which there, there were cuts were made.
Yeah, that, and actually even back in 14, 15, and maybe even 16, I'm not sure. But we were, we had some roof, roofing projects lined up and we were asked to put, have them, uh, moved out a couple of years, which is, uh, and we're in those years that we moved them out too. So yeah, I think that the original board of ed request versus the, what was spent would be informative.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I was pleasantly surprised when I saw this number, Brian, um, which in some years I think has been higher. Um, significantly. And I, and I think these are all pretty good, pretty good projects. And, and, and doing the five-year capital plan is, I think, been very helpful to see what we need going forward.
You know, the other thing to keep in mind and Board of Finance will focus on this is the interest rates have never been so low. And there, there's only one way for them to go probably. And, uh, and therefore, to the extent we have pipe projects in the pipeline or in the next year, you know, for example, the CHP at the high school, and if we're investing capital dollars, it makes more sense to borrow at 2% or less than to borrow at 3% or 4% in a few years. So these are 20
That might, that might inform our decision or help inform our decision, Kevin, about the, uh, the high school roof, whether to split it over two years or try to do it in one for a little bit less and maybe the lower interest rate. The challenge, of course, is, uh, replacing a roof while schools in session is, uh, an enormous undertaking, right? Because of all of the, the people it takes, the noise it makes, the, it smells, everything else that's involved. So we just have to work through to see what, how that could work, if it can work. Uh, but that's another data point for that decision. That's helpful.
You guys can get it done.
The only other thing I'd, I'd mention myself about, uh, you know, we'd like to look at, um, as part of a MOU on capital projects, um, to look at some of the athletic facilities that perhaps we should rejigger since, since the, since the parks department, parks, we will be maintaining Dunning Field, for example. Um, capital, capital projects that are going to go into a facility that, that, um, it, it really a question, you know, where things are historically on board of bed property versus town property. That has jurisdiction during the week. We've been looking at what Westport does with their, their policy about use of facilities outside of school hours and, and summertime. So I think that's another subject we need to discuss in February as to, uh, as to how we can rejigger some of the, some of the athletic fields to better coordinate what we're trying to accomplish with, uh, with the athletic foundation and, um, and to properly put the expenses, um, where they might better belong. So. Cause we don't have a facility that no one has a budget for it to maintain. And Dunning for, you know, has been, has been an orphan for 20 years. And now we finally are put it on a good ground with the athletic foundation for future, um, but we need to also maintain the facility and, and pay for the lights and that kind of thing. So. I think that probably Kathleen or Nick, do you have anything further?
Yeah, I just, I mean, what can I say? I mean, Brian, under your leadership and Joanne, Trina and Penny in the Board of Education, I mean, I'm just, it's breathtaking what you guys have been able to achieve, uh, in the last year. Um, it really is. And, and, and is, is so often the case, McKinnon has been a leader. Um, a leader for the rest of the state, a leader for the country in terms of what you've been able to achieve in remote learning and then bringing it back and, and, you know, just, just being, um, you know, constantly open to new ideas and, and ways to get around this horrible pandemic. It's just been, it's, it's been breathtaking. And, and so I can't commend you guys, all of you folks enough for the job that you've done for our town. Thank you.
And it's hard to, uh, echo that any better than what Nick has already said, except just to extend my grateful thanks, uh, for the work that you've done. Uh, not only in this past year, but, uh, you know, when I, I look at the budget, uh, it's been three years since I've seen it. Uh, and, uh, looks, it looks terrific. So thank you for what you're doing for our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, you know, coming from the three of you, coming from a former board of ed chair and Kathleen, with your extensive experience and town council, everything else that you've done. And Kevin, with your, thank you. Means a lot. And, uh, and we're proud to do it. It's, uh, it's a labor of love, as you know. And in our schools every day, we're doing the, I believe, the most important work on the planet. And that's, uh, that's how we approach it. And that's how we get it done. So, thanks.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, uh, Joanne and, uh, Katrina and all the other ad members and, uh, staff that's on here. I would just, you know, thank you for the working relationship. If I'm, we see what's happening in some other towns between the board of ed and the town board of ed and health department, we're very lucky not to have that kind of friction. So.
Yep. And we've, um, we've made our own luck on that. So we'll continue to make our own luck on that and continue to work well as strong partners in this. Because as we said in the beginning, we're all working towards the same goals, which is, uh, stand tall, be proud, do the right things and guide our, our entire community, school and town together through, uh, through these experiences that we're having. So, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Linda, what's next up for?
I have Leon and, and, um, Johnson Federico here, ready to go.
Yes. Next is the police department. And in your books, we're going to go over their operating budget and their capital. Um, I believe they typically start with their operating budget, which is on page 10. And you will see their capital budget is on page 75. So Leon, I'm going to toss it up to you.
If you have 15 minutes.
Got it. Hold, hold your seat. I'm going to share my screen now.
Seriously, maybe half hour. I think we budgeted 45 minutes, but you can probably do it faster.
See that?
Yep.
Okay. So thanks for, uh, taking the time today to listen to our, uh, budget presentation. First thing we're going to talk about is animal control. Then we're going to talk about, uh, police capital, police operating, staffing and overtime. So I'll, uh, be very efficient in my presentation and feel free to stop me at any point. And, uh, you'll see it's a very lean budget, uh, 0.9 for operating police, um, which is pretty lean considering all the dynamics of what we have to do. Uh, the capital is substantially increased, uh, because of the police accountability bill and, uh, the requirements we have there related to body cameras and dash cameras in our car. Uh, but we'll talk about the little bit further. Um, so we're very thoughtful in how we do our budgeting. Um, it's a lean budget. We strive for excellence. I think everybody can agree that our officers perform exceptionally. We've done great work over the years despite very trying circumstances. And certainly 2020 was a difficult year with, uh, protests and pandemic and police accountability and all kinds of other stuff. Um, but despite that, our officers excelled and, uh, they rose above all that and, uh, served the community exceptionally well. So we shall be proud of that. So animal control, um, there's been a lot of discussion of that in the news recently. Um, our animal control, uh, officer does an exceptional job. We got to call her out for her great work on that puppy case. And as you know, while we, the town does have full custody, um, contingent on a possible appeal of the puppies. So at some point in the near future, hopefully they'll be adopted out to homes. And so great work there. That makes everybody smile. I feel like dogs, a pretty cute bunch there. Uh, they're in our custody right now and they're, they're pretty happy. And, uh, hopefully very soon they'll be adopted out to home. So, um, don't pick one out yet, but, uh, keep an eye on the one you like. So animal control summary, our, uh, no capital request this year. Uh, budget request is 103364, which is a 5.1% decrease compared to FY21. And that's, uh, connected to eliminating part-time animal control officer hours. Um, after consulting with Allison, uh, it's exceptionally difficult to find qualified people to serve in a part-time capacity. So, uh, she decided that we did not need to fill that slot. It may happen in the future. We may need to come back and ask for some money, but, um, that's not likely. So, uh, she was comfortable cutting those hours. So that resulted in that decrease for animal control. Any questions about animal control?
So she's just her, just, there's just one staff member and that's, that's our animal control officer. She has no other support?
Exactly. Right. She, she works with us, so we support her, but, um, she, she works at our department. We support her with all kinds of other help that she might need. But she alone does majority of the animal control work, um, when she's working, when she's not working, our officers cover it. And she follows up on it when she comes back to work.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So return on investment, I think everybody likes to talk about that, um, before we get into the numbers. But sometimes we get all focused on the numbers and we forget about what our officers do for the town. So we're going to, we have some photos here that are, they're kind of telling. And we also have some, uh, specific, uh, goals that have been achieved that are very, very critical to talk about. So that's a little side-by-side summary. Um, what's kind of telling is a 47% increase in psychiatric calls. Um, this is pretty substantial, even the numbers about 50. Um, so those are very complex calls. And I think, uh, when you, when you look at through our nation with some of the tragedies that have happened, lots of them are tied into, um, folks not being well-trained enough to deal with, uh, profound psychiatric issues and resulting tragedies that sometimes happen. But, uh, we should keep that in perspective too. I get often asked about it. Um, considering there's 9,000 police officers in Connecticut and 900,000 officers across our nation who handle millions of calls. Um, some estimate, and it's a pretty accurate number, that less than one tenth of 1% of the calls are handled badly. Result in tragedy, but unfortunately our, uh, our media focuses on those negative instances and they don't focus enough on the positive. Um, so another after effect of, uh, COVID and reduced traffic is a 41% decrease in accidents, although we'll take credit for that. Um, it's related mostly due to substantially decreased traffic. So that's certainly a good trend we'd like to see continue. Um, so that's a little snapshot of 2019 versus 2020. Some highlights, uh, as you know, or you should know, we're, uh, one of only three Kalia accredited agencies in Fairfield County. So there's about 17 agencies in Fairfield County. Um, we're one of only three and, uh, it's quite a intensive process, best practices, uh, related to policies and procedures and oversight and all the, all the good things that everybody should be doing. And what's interesting is, uh, part of the police accountability bill in Connecticut is that, uh, all agencies become Kalia accredited. So with that already, but unfortunately it sounds like they're going to back off on that requirement. And it'll be something less for most departments that aren't Kalia accredited, but we're very proud of that. And, uh, it certainly makes us a great department and, and keeps us on track for all the good things that we do.
She, what, what is it about Kalia that, that prevents other, uh, agencies from seeking that out? Is it cost or?
It, it's cost in part, it's, it's cost, it's effort, it's time dedication. Uh, it takes three to five years to get to the point where you can be assessed and become, uh, accredited for the first time. Um, and it's no small effort, especially if you have policies that are from the 60s or 70s or 80s. And they need to be all brought up to speed. There's close to 400 standards you have to comply with. Um, so depending on the status of your agency depends on how long it might take you to get up to speed, so to speak. So I think it's, it's, for some, the reality is, I think the timeline was three to five year, I think it was five years that they wanted all agencies in Connecticut to be Kalia credited. And that's not a realistic timeline because it takes so long. And there's 100 something agencies in Connecticut that aren't accredited. Um, I don't think it's, it was a realistic thing to do, certainly a good goal and would certainly make a department a better department if they did comply with it. But, uh, I think that's part of the reason. So it's a balance of cost, dedication and, and effort.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So, uh, certainly our officers have been stressed with, uh, responding to COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, not only being exposed, but also dealing with side issues related to psychiatric incidents. And, um, we'll talk a little bit more about that in upcoming slides. Uh, certainly responds to calls for police reform. Sadly, uh, the legislators kind of pushed through this law, which is very comprehensive. Uh, some parts of it are great, uh, others aren't so great. And, uh, I'm estimating it's going to cost Connecticut taxpayers, uh, in excess of $30 million this year. Uh, if, if all the requirements are put into place. Um, so that's a pretty substantial amount of money that's, I believe, to some degree, isn't needed in Connecticut. Um, I think it was a, uh, throw everything at the effort rather than, uh, be very fact-specific and look at what's happening in Connecticut and not out west or not down south, because, uh, the dynamics are just substantially different. So it happens to be what it is. So we have to comply with it and that's part of our goals for this year. We continue to work, uh, the Jennifer Dulles missing person murder investigation. Um, you'll see that in the news, uh, just recently. And that continues to be an effort. And thanks to the state police for their great work and all the other agencies that helped us uh, with this tragedy. And hopefully we'll, uh, we'll get some closure for the Dulles family and we'll find Jennifer at some point. Uh, as I mentioned, the drop in motor vehicle accidents, 41%, um, which is substantial. We have a very diverse, uh, staff, which we're very proud of. We have, uh, four African-American officers, four Hispanic officers and six females. Uh, about a third of our department is, uh, diverse in that respect, the most it's ever been in history. So that's something we're very proud of and hopefully we'll continue to be able to recruit, um, that diverse, great group of officers that are serving our town so well. Um, certainly we managed several peaceful protests, uh, large one in June, which we'll see in a minute. And, uh, involve, some are estimating the crowd was 1,500 to 2,000 people. Um, and I think, uh, what you should all be proud of is, uh, a gentleman commented to me when I was, I was in the march and I was talking to some people. He said, you know, if all police departments were like your department, we wouldn't have any problems in our nation. So that's something, and he didn't even live in town. So that's something we should all be proud of. So, uh, everybody handled that exceptionally well. And certainly we all support the right to peaceful protest. So that was a good thing and, uh, something I think it was a healing effect for a lot of people. So that's the, that's one of the pictures of the protest. Uh, I think we, we've never seen anything quite this scale in history. Um, pretty exceptional, uh, considering how peaceful it was and how it, once it ended, everybody went home and went about their ways. There was no fights. There was no disputes. There was no confrontations really. And, uh, thanks to our officer for handling it so well and for the participants for being so peaceful. So thanks to them for that. That's another picture from our headquarters. Pretty exceptional as a, some of the clergy that was there was leading everyone into prayer. So that's, that's a nice thing. And that was a healing effect there. So, you know, once again, I wish that people wouldn't get caught up in tragic incidents that happen in other places in our nation where policing is much different. And then connect that back to us and try to paint our department as being like them. It's just, it's not factual, not true or not fair. That's one of the many things that we do for people, that officers helping change attire there. So that's certainly a nice community service effect that we have. And whenever we can do that, we like to help people out like that. It's, it reaps rewards. Certainly not everybody hates the police in New Canaan thankfully. A lot of people love us and certainly that in front of our headquarters makes everybody feel good. And you know, I think from the beginning, the vast amount of our town supports us and has been trying to reassure us that they appreciate what our department does for the town. So that's certainly something that makes everybody smile. A couple of our officers there, some folks at Acme donated kind bars and we appreciate that. And that's, that's a nice thing as well to show their support for our department. So we always appreciate that. Some more highlights for 2020, strength, strengthened our crisis intervention training. What that is, it's in essence, there's teams of officers on each shift now that are trained in intervening in psychiatric incidents or incidents where folks are in crisis. And related to that, we issued the Boulder rap, which is a non-lethal restraint device that shoots out a Kevlar cable that can wrap around someone and restrain them. And we were the first department in Connecticut to adopt that. It won't work at every instance, but it's, it's another tool that the officers can use, especially when they're responding to a psychiatric incident like that where there's no weapons involved and they can safely restrain the person. So we're proud of that as well. And certainly Silver Hill has been a great partner in that regard, providing training and oversight and suggestions and guidance when we, when we deal with many complex issues. Regarding the criminal aspect of what we do in the complex crime investigation, we investigated many complex frauds and thefts over the course of 2020. Many retail crimes, a bank robbery, which is unusual. It was an armed bank robbery. But look for that in the coming weeks for, for some pretty exceptional work in progress on that crime. And also arrested a couple of adult predators. One was out west and luring a juvenile in New Canaan. And another one was local and actually came to New Canaan to be a predator. So we can't encourage parents enough to be watchful of what their children are doing on social media and pay attention because it can often result in tragedy and lifelong consequences. That's the bank robber right there. We'll talk more about that in the coming weeks. That's the gentleman we arrested for coming to town to try to lure a minor and sexual assault. So that's the kind of horrible things that sometimes happen in our great town. But exceptional work by our officers in capturing this gentleman. He's now in federal custody and has been taken over as a federal case. So he's looking to do some significant time in federal prison. So that's not necessarily a bad thing. More goals for 2021. We're going to continue to work closely with our schools to minimize the availability of drugs to our youth. As you know, it's been in the news for many years. We originally had a MOU with the schools regarding using our canine to detect and prevent drug use. And that seemed to be agreeable. That went off the table with COVID. So I'm hopeful once COVID settles down, we're able to reengage and get in those discussions again. So do what we can do collectively and collaboratively to prevent drugs from being in our schools. Enhance community policing. That's certainly something that's very critical. And we will always continue to do that. As you may have seen in the news, we recently re-implemented our town, town officer, which is our community impact officer. And she's connecting very well with the business community and making everybody feel a little bit safer as they, they go about their business in the center of town. We're going to continue to focus training for officer safety and use of force. Those are two big issues. I think you'll see nationwide, but I think we we're frankly at the forefront of that when you compare other departments to what we do. And we'll continue to relentlessly educate residents about crime prevention, locking your car, setting your alarm, suspicious activity. We've had a flurry of stolen cars and thefts from cars this year, including guns, stolen cars. And recently, Irwin Park, the other day, on Saturday, I believe, saw a forced entry of a couple of vehicles because people left valuables in the car. And that's unusual, the forced entry. So I suspect that is a gang that we've seen come up from down south. Their identity theft gang and they target vehicles like that and they, they steal financial information and ultimately identity theft issues. So that's likely them. So I can't say enough, you know, just lock your car, don't leave valuables in it. We can't emphasize that enough. And we'll continue to emphasize our downtown officer program, conduct targeted enforcement at high accident locations, crisis intervention, as we talked about previously. And thankfully we are moving our PD renovation forward. Thanks to Kevin for leading that effort and we most recently visited Bethel and Newtown PDs to look for ideas. And I'm very, I'm very, frankly, I'm excited that that's moving forward as quickly as it is. And the talent we have on that committee is exceptional and that'll result in a great new police building of some sort.
Thank you, chief. That was great.
You're welcome.
And thank you for you and John and Andrew and all you guys do to lead that department.
Of course.
We really appreciate our police. You said vast majority, I'd say 99.9% of the people support the police and appreciate what you do every day. That's a good looking old high school building, but I'm not sure it's what we need for the 21st century for a police department.
Exactly.
I'll just kind of quickly, having, having visited Bethel twice now and Newtown for the first time last week. You know, it made sense in 1980 to repurpose a high school for a police department. And in some ways that building makes a lot of sense because of its location. But when you see what goes into a police department building these days, people have to realize it'll cost probably $14 million to renovate that building to become a modern police department or more. It's, it's astounding what, what is required to have a modern police department. So I'm personally more inclined to want to build a new building somewhere. Unless we can build a new building behind this building and repurpose this building for something, whether it's senior housing or some kind of we, we don't need another government building. I don't believe so. But you know, I'd be happy to have Kathleen or Nick address any questions to the chief or John.
Hey Leon.
Yes.
What, what's your, what's your preference today?
For the building?
Yeah.
Frankly, all along, it's been a new building somewhere in town. The right location, a new building just makes a lot of sense from from the perspective of building it the right way for a police department and not repurposing. But you know, we'll see what we're able to do in that regard. I know several members on the committee have been doing great work identifying possible locations for a new building. So I think that discussion will be pushed along in the coming weeks. Certainly, if, if, if we can't find a location for a new building, which is at the top of the list, then I would say renovate existing. It's not ideal, but if that's what we have to do, that one or the other has to be done very soon.
What, what's the timing with respect to the recommendations from the committee?
Yeah, I don't know. Kevin, talk more about that.
I would expect we're going to have recommendations by June. Because we're really, you know, if we get 45 years out of the current building, we will have gotten our money's worth and but it'll take two years to build a new building or renovate that building and renovating a building in place, having a movie in a police department out and operating for probably 18 months or more is not ideal. So, and costly.
Yeah, look, I'm in favor of this, have been for a while. It's, it's been something that's been on our radar for almost as long as I've been a selectman, which is a long time. And I'm, I'm, you know, looking forward to the, to seeing what the committee has come up with.
Excellent. Thank you. So I'll keep pushing through. Capital summary, a couple of vehicles in line with our, I'm sorry.
Leon, before you get to capital, can you just speak briefly on the impact on the budget and your budget with, with respect to the Accountability Act?
Sure. Well, that's kind of highlighted here. Operating budget wise, there'll be a slight impact. Capital is substantial impact this year.
So it's mostly capital and not, not operating?
What's that?
It's mostly capital and not operating.
Yeah, there, there'd be slight impacts in operating. We don't know is what the future is going to hold. You know, the, it's a, it's a very comprehensive set of changes to existing practices. Some are minor and some are policy revisions where certain significant. But we, what we don't know in the future is, you know, they're creating an inspector general position that will investigate use of force and other issues related to police in Connecticut. That's not in place yet. We don't know what impact that might have. We don't know what impact the, if you're familiar with federal 1983 civil litigation related to civil rights violations. And the state pretty much created a statute that's similar to that. So it will allow state actions for civil rights violations. That's an unknown area of law that's I think going to evolve and be built. So we don't know what impact that might have on departments. Initially, the experts are saying it won't have any financial impact on insurance or municipalities, but that remains to be seen. There are issues related to requiring testing for drugs and also psychiatric testing. Periodic every three or every five years, depending on the specific issue. There's some small associated costs related to that. What we don't know is if that's going to impact staffing, if there'll be ensuing litigation related to it. Those are unknowns. But you know, the bulk that I'm asking for this year is related to capital request. As you may know, and for the past seven years or so, we've had body cameras. We were one of the first in Fairfield County to have body cameras. And right now we share them. We have a number of them that are shared amongst the shifts and it's worked exceptionally well. And in fact, it's, it's helped alleviate some allegations against our officers and protected them. And so it's been a great thing. Every department should have body cameras. The challenge is this require, this law now requires that every officer have a body camera, including me. Whenever you're in uniform, in public with limited circumstances, when you don't have to have a body camera. And it also requires an in-car camera system for every marked police vehicle. So that's challenging. It's complicated in that the body camera and the in-car camera needs to coordinate in that if you stop a vehicle, the in-car camera starts. And then once you get it out of the vehicle, the body camera starts filming. So that needs to be all one system. Right now it just wouldn't work how we have it set up. And also the data storage is substantially more. Our experience with in-car cameras isn't a great one. More than a decade ago, we had in-car cameras. They weren't reliable. They weren't very useful and they were quite expensive. And so now we're kind of resurfacing that again. We believe that the technology has advanced to the point where it's a lot more reliable and useful. But my personal opinion is body cameras are great, in-car cameras not so useful. So that's just something we have to deal with. There's talk of in the legislature of some funding, but I'm not optimistic that they're going to provide that to our town. So that's, that's a bulk cost that we have to absorb this year. And there'll be some, some slight increases in capital over the years based on equipment replacements and requirements and all that. But the one-year impact will be 20, $226,000 this year. And that's, I think every department in Connecticut is facing that unless you already have body cameras and in-car cameras. So like I mentioned.
So that has to be in place when? Is there, is there a deadline?
July 1. So it's right after July 1. It needs to be all in place. You know, right now we have body cameras, which is good. But we need to buy a lot more, change the vendor and also get in-car camera systems in place. So it'll be a a fast moving process shortly after July 1. We've already identified a couple of potential vendors that are ready to get on board and get the work done. So at least we're ahead of that curve in that regard.
Okay.
So going back to capital, which I'll discuss first. We're requesting two vehicles and equipment, which is in line with our five-year capital plan. So it's 23232. And that's worked really well for keeping our fleet relatively healthy and safe and effective for officers to use. We'll talk a little bit more in a subsequent slide about our fleet. And Taser replacements, bulletproof vests replacements, video and recording equipment. That's a new item because our recording equipment at our front desk and in our booking area has reached end of life. So that needs to be replaced. And also, as I mentioned, the bulk of this request is related to the police accountability legislation and requirements for body and in-car cameras. So we're also working with our IT department to see how we can cut some costs and be more efficient. But it, it looks like it's 226,000 at this point. That's a little snapshot of our vehicles. As we know, there, there are offices for our officers and there's a lot of critical emergency equipment in each of those vehicles. A number of years ago, we moved to Ford SUVs, which have been exceptional. They're reliable in all weather conditions and they're safe and they're able to carry all the equipment that our officers need. So that's, that's a great model and we're very comfortable with that. And two vehicles is in line with our five-year capital plan. As I've mentioned previously, industry best practice is to replace vehicles at 80 to 85,000. And keep in mind, 80 to 85,000 and not, is not your vehicle mileage. It's a 24/7 used police vehicle and you wouldn't want to probably drive in that vehicle at 85,000 miles. It's a lot different than a passenger vehicle, the usage wise and the wear and tear.
Chief, what's our view on getting EVs?
I haven't seen it widespread because of the requirement, maybe, maybe some administrative purposes in the future. But I haven't seen it yet implemented fleet-wide because of the power requirements. I think some departments are doing it as a test case and/or as a public relations issue. But I haven't seen that yet as a, as a fleet-wide possibility. So until that point comes, I don't know, I don't know if that's the direction we should proceed in, but we're certainly keeping an eye on things and, and see what might make sense.
And Westport has Teslas, so.
Yes. Yeah. I, I, you know, I'd like to sit down and do a cost benefit analysis on that whole initiative. And I suspect it wouldn't be favorable, but it looks good and makes everybody excited. But I don't think in the long run, it makes sense, maybe for the environment, but maybe not for cost effectiveness. That's a snapshot of our vehicles. As you, as you can see, we keep a very close eye on our vehicles and we track them. You'll see several of these vehicles are replaced next year because we literally just ordered three vehicles that will allow us to move around our fleet. We traded in some vehicles that'll go to other town departments. And those well-used vehicles will get traded in to offset some of the costs related to our new vehicles. So that's a little snapshot, snapshot there.
Just, so I think I understand if 80,000 is your goal, you're turning them over, what, every four years or what's the?
Yeah, that's, that's roughly every four to five years. It's reasonable. Sometimes we keep them longer depending on how reliable the vehicles are. We consult with our highway department mechanics, identify vehicles. Frankly, there's some vehicles for whatever reason that have less miles than that, that are continually being serviced and have major repairs that are covered by warranty. So we push those out of the fleet earlier. But the good news is lately our police been exceptionally reliable and we're very, we're very happy with that. So thanks to our highway folks for their great work too. So as you can see, that's our benchmarking. Everybody kind of, what, years ago, we're asking questions about, you know, why we need two to three vehicles a year. And you can see that we're very conservative in comparison to similar departments, which are highlighted in red. Darien gets three to five vehicles a year and Wilton gets five to six and they replace it 45 to 55,000. Whereas, you know, we're 80 to 85,000 plus. So we're very conservative in how we manage our fleet and what we ask for is we, you know, we frankly, we, we appreciate the taxpayer support. So we're trying to be conservative about what we ask for. Now we'll go into operating. So our operating quest for FY22 is 6546742, which is a 0.9% increase as compared to FY21. And keep in mind FY21, I believe was a, was a negative ones, 1.7 decrease. So it's a very conservative increase considering that. Talk more about that in the coming slides, some of the specifics. So a new item for FY21, which continues in FY22, is a salary offset line. So that anticipates the retirement or resignation of two top level or top tier officers, which results in a decrease of 142074. And as we And as we sit here right now, our, that full-time salary line is tracking below um, what it should be, so we're in very good shape in that regard, so. Uh, right now, we have at least eight officers who could retire at any point. Um, so I'm very comfortable with uh, this and being able to meet our budget based on uh, past historicals. And I've looked at last ten years of retirements and resignations, and that's how I determined uh, that it was a reasonable um, number to figure uh, two retirements for nine months at a time, and that's how we came to the one-four-two-oh-seven-four.
And chief, is that the net, uh, assuming this is what the decline is? But then you have to add in replacements or this is their total?
Well, it typically takes anywhere from nine to twelve months to hire and replace an officer, so there's that vacancy. Um, so that's based on a, a nine-month uh vacancy due to retirement or resignation. And uh, so that's factored into the, the overall salary. So the overall salary is ninety-four thousand or so. And so nine months of that is uh, half of that, so it's like seventy-one thousand. So that's how we came to that number.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So you can see, we're very uh, careful about how we build our budget. We go line by line, increase or decrease based on needs and projections and and what, what we're believing will might happen and coming into the future, so we're very careful about that. And we'll talk about staffing. As I mentioned, uh, at least eight members of the department could retire at any point. So we always have to think about that. And uh, that's why it's critical for us to keep our, our full complement. Um, when we can find uh, exceptional people that we want to hire and get them on board. Um, the state hasn't been uh, great with uh, training and and sending officers to the academy. It's been a struggle. Um, so the good news is right now we're fully staffed, aside from one officer who very soon will be on military leave the balance of the year. Um, so wish him well. He's headed out to uh, another part of the, of our world that's not so friendly. Um, so good, Godspeed to him. Best compliment is forty-seven officers. Right now, uh, we're at that level, which is great. And uh, as, as we've discussed previously, we have very long hiring and training timelines, which are distinct from most um, departments in, in our town, meaning it takes us from nine to twelve months to hire an officer, bring them on board, get them to the police academy, get them field-trained to the point where they can uh, operate alone and and help with our staffing needs. So as I mentioned, we're at a full complement and uh, another officer, an officer will be on military leave for the balance of twenty-twenty-one. Um, that's our staffing challenge there, so. Some successes, um, school resource officers uh, at the, at Saks and then at the high school. Um, they're great resources. The community loves them and uh, it's something we would never want to take out of our school system uh, for lots of different reasons. And even in the COVID environment, they're uh, they're contributing significantly to the, to the school and how they help and manage the staff and the students and all that. And another success is the recent uh, implementation again of our community downtown officer. And uh, she, there's no doubt she'll be uh, contributing substantially to the center of town and and making things a a lot better and safer and more cohesive related to our service to the community there. And uh, there's lots of retirements throughout Connecticut. And it's a challenging environment. So the good news is right now we don't have to hire anyone, but if we do in the near future, um, it can be challenging because lots of people are retiring, lots of people that were on the fence about being police officers, giving all the dynamics in our nation, aren't choosing that career anymore. Um, so it's a challenging environment. The good news is we've been able to hire exceptional people and retain them and uh, keep them as part of our complement. We'll talk about overtime. Um, we are very uh, conservative in what we ask for overtime. Uh, it's less than eleven percent of our aggregate salaries. Whereas nationwide, many departments average eighteen to thirty percent of their aggregate salaries, so we're very uh, happy with that regard, in that regard. And uh, that, it's a very conservative number. And our overtime spending is in line with comparable police departments and and local emergency services. Um, that's the question I always ask when we ask for our overtime number every year. And you can see we have closer to a decade worth of data there about what we ask, what we spend and uh, um, this year, we're on track for around five-forty. And our uh, our budget is five-thirty-five. We may be under budget. We may exceed it a little bit. And uh, for FY twenty-two, we're asking for five-thirty. Um, it's pretty conservative based on all the things that we do and and the demands that we have. And uh, this is the system, it's a automated scheduling system that we implemented a number of years ago. And allows to track and identify why we're hiring, why we're spending overtime. And uh, identify some deficiencies in advance where we might move people around or or do things to mitigate that. And you can see this is about sixty-one percent of our spending. Um, with the top one being shift shortage, time off, and uh, goes down the list there.
Chief, could you go back to the prior slide?
Sure.
The overtime slide?
Yes.
So for two thousand twenty?
Yep.
Adopted forecast actual. We actually came in lower than the fork, than the adopted budget?
We did.
Despite the uh, the uh, Dulose investigation?
Yes. Well, that was uh, so that's, that was probably, let's see. So this is twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty. Yeah, so we, we came in under budget, yep.
Okay.
So that's our goal, adopt a realistic and attainable overtime budget based on historical spending and contractual obligations. And uh, our forecast for FY twenty-one is five-forty. Um, but we're asking for five-thirty for FY twenty-two. And uh, that's all I have about overtime. And that's the end of my presentation. Glad to answer any questions anybody has and.
And Nick, do you want to start?
Uh, just to say, I, thank you, chief. You answered our questions along the way, but um, really appreciate that. When, when you do uh, find out about retirements and, you know, you get sort of a, a a layout of the timeline, is that when you come back to us and, and say we want to replace that individual? How does that work process-wise?
Yeah, well, it's, it's, we're, we're not saying we're not going to um, staff it. What we're doing is based on past, over the past ten years, we saw positions vacant for up to nine months, maybe two a year.
Right.
So it's an offset in, in the overall operating budget. Um, right now, we're on track. Uh, we're not, we're not seeing any deficiency related to our salary line. And in fact, our, our overall fifty-point-six-oh, so we're, we're right on track in that regard, so. Um, i- if we did find some circumstance where we were, we were over budget, we and I believe they set aside, there's money set aside in contingency for that.
Right.
Basically, we need to come back and ask for that, some unusual circumstance.
Is, is your, uh, are the labor agreements up this year or?
They are, yes.
Contract-wise, okay.
Yep, yep. In the coming months, uh, I forget what the timeline is for negotiations, so they are up.
Okay, okay, great. And one last thing, thank you for this presentation. Really appreciate it. I don't know whether uh, Linda, perhaps we can just uh, pop those into our uh, tablets, just for future reference. That'd be great.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And chief, I have no further questions and just to say, you know, thank you again. Great job uh, on the budget. Great job uh, over the past year dealing with the, you know, the pandemic, um, the uh, you know, the kind of rioting, rioting in the streets type behavior, although we certainly didn't have that in New Canaan and in, in large part, thanks to you and uh, uh, you know, this great department of ours.
Thank you.
Chief, I'd like to go back. I, I may, I tend to multitask during these meetings, so I may have missed. Do you have a slide back on crime statistics and uh?
Yes.
And our experience in the past year and uh, specifically with people working from home. Do, do you see any uh, besides break-ins of cars, which is um, unfortunately prevalent in every affluent community? But if you, you could go back and review that, maybe, maybe I missed that when you went through it.
Yeah, I mean, uh, so the larceny slide includes from vehicles, so that's an aggregate number. And we have seen a, an increase uh, to some degree with uh, fraud um, targeting businesses um, with uh, kind of a business enterprise scam. Um, where in essence, uh, someone will monitor a business's email. And they'll um, at some point, they know there's a transaction pending. And they'll contact the business and say, hey, you know, we know this is happening. Can you, can you wire fifty thousand or a hundred thousand in advance? And the business doesn't have the uh, the right protections in place or protocols and uh, they'll get taken advantage of. So we've seen that. Um, over the, over the past year or so, we've seen some targeted uh, uh, specific fraud related to that. Um, certainly it's unusual for us. We've seen some retail theft gangs, which is a little bit unusual. Uh, coming to town and from out of town. Uh, the bank robbery is unusual. Um, in that it was armed and we don't see very many bank robberies. Um, so, so not a whole lot of um, targeted financial crimes to residents per se. There's always identity theft. That's a continuous problem. Um, but we've seen, you know, a fair number of family disputes and psychiatric incidents at residences, which I believe is connected back to the pandemic and all the stress that people are feeling. Um, because sometimes it brings out underlying behavioral health issues.
On the other hand, motor vehicle stops were, were down significantly.
Yes.
Is that because people are not rushing for the train in the morning or?
Uh, no, it's, it's connected to the dramatic drop in traffic. And also, we directed our officers for many months um, to minimize contact as much as they could. Unless it was a critical, we don't want people to get sick.
It's really COVID-related, okay.
Yeah, it's all COVID-related. Um, and you know, it's, that continues. Uh, frankly, you know, we had a uh, kind of take care of our workforce as best we could. You know, we've seen some positive cases and some quarantining and things like that. Hasn't been dramatic and it hasn't hurt us substantially staffing-wise. Um, we had to manage it in that regard because uh, you know, we had to identify what are, what are the critical tasks that we respond to? Um, whether it's a family dispute, a psychiatric call, medical assist call. And um, determine, you know, how are we going to place our officers in risk or not? And how they can best mitigate that, so um, that's, that's all interconnected to that.
So, and the stolen vehicles being up to twenty-seventh from ten the prior year, is that, are, are the vehicles generally um, found within town or uh?
No, they're generally found in, in the inner cities, um, Waterbury, New Haven, Bridgeport. Um, sometimes out of uh, out of state, but typically uh, the trend is Waterbury, New Haven, Bridgeport area. Um, and you know, they're, they're loosely organized juvenile gangs that uh, come around Fairfield County, steal the cars, sometimes joyride, sometimes commit crimes with them. Um, and then at some stage, dump them. Um, one unusual development was we saw one car that was recovered in Hartford as part of a um, a, I guess, a, a, an operation where they would uh, steal parts from the vehicles and sell them. Um, so that was unusual in that regard, but typically it's it, they don't have any financial incentive for stealing the car and it's just kind of a joyride and a fun thing to do. Because they know they can come into town and they also try to get into pursuit with police. Um, because they, they think it's fun and it's exciting and very often they're using drugs. Some of them are carrying weapons. Um, and you know, as we know, recently they have number of weapons from town because people left them in their cars, so that's certainly uh, a, a big concern of mine. Um, so yeah, I mean, but I do know that uh, FBI is now involved in some respects uh, with uh, stolen vehicles when it, when it goes across state lines. They've made some arrests in that regard, but the vast majority of these um, these juvenile members are juveniles and they usually don't face any kind of substantial impact in the justice system and some of them can be arrested dozens and dozens of times before something intervention-wise happens. Um, so it's a sad, kind of sad of circumstances in that regard. There's, you know, there's no parental influence and and uh, just a reckless, dangerous aspect to it all.
So the other thing that's really quite down is motor vehicle accidents. That's because people, that's surprising too.
Yeah, substantial traffic decrease. Um, if you remember March, April, May, June, uh, traffic was dramatically down. You know, people weren't going to work. They were staying home, so that, that was all interconnected as well.
So the final question for me is um, it wouldn't, uh, we, there's been discussion about the animal shelter. Most people don't realize it, but the chief of police reports to the police commission and not to the first selectman. Under which is fine. And I, I wasn't trying to deflect responsibility, but the proper uh, venue to talk about the animal shelter is the funding of bodies, which is, starts with this person, this, the selectman and then goes to the border finance and then to the town council. And um, so it, could I ask you to comment on the animal uh, animal shelter and um, has it been discussed by the police commission and what, you know? Uh, there was a meeting last week, which I didn't attend, but people called the building in the transportation decrepit, which is you know, some people would call Old Brook building kind of uh, historic and uh, and uh,
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, so, I think it's a, a case of uh, Yankee frugality, if you will, in that decades ago, the building was repurposed. It was an incinerator building. There's no insulation in the walls. And it was made into an animal shelter. Um, it, it is cold inside because it's all concrete, uh, but recently the town installed uh, a good heating system, so it is warm now. And it's better lit. I think it's adequate, uh, but given uh, the love that people have for animals in our town. Um, it's probably wise to put that on the planning perspective and uh, and get some kind of enhanced shelter in place. I mean, look at these little guys. How, how can you say no to them? Um, they need a great place to live.
Well, on the other hand, I, I spent an hour on the phone last week with our neighbor Mayor Martin and Jamie Stevenson from Darien at his request to talk about a regional animal shelter in Stanford. And he, he, he plans to want to build a new one um, downtown in South Stanford, next to the transfer, their, their existing one. And I said, that wouldn't be very workable for, for New Canaan or Darien, um, to have to have officers drive animals down to South Stanford and then have residents go down to pick up their, their dogs or, or cats. Um, they apparently have more cats in Stanford than we have, but uh, but um, the uh, so I said, if you, if you were looking at Springdale, you know, that industrial complex, that, maybe that would work. So we're having that conversation. The other conversation is what Darien does is to have an animal hospital. There's a couple of animal hospitals in Norwalk and uh, one twenty, one-twenty-three in Overhwood Seven. Whether we ought to just simply outsource the, the function, um. Uh, but I think the primary consideration is the convenience of having officers be able to go to a location that's convenient. Because the, the animals are generally picked up within uh, within four or five hours a day and, and uh, we don't re- regularly uh, shelter animals overnight. So, Nick, do you want to have any further comment on this question or, or uh?
Uh, no, uh, you know, Kevin, I, I mean, I think that it's good that we're having this discussion and I appreciate the chief's comments. I've said all along, um, I'd be open to you know, various alternatives, whether we reconstruct or construct de novo um, a new facility, whether we you know, rehab another, uh, uh, another building that we have. Kiwanis has been mentioned, um. Um, or outsource, as I think Darien does. I, I, I just, I'm, I'm happy that you know, the town is, is finally having these discussions, we're putting thought into this and you know, we'll come to a decision that I think is a, is a good one. So, thank you, thank you and thank the chief.
I agree. I'd love to see, again, I don't know if it comes through for the selectman first or obviously the police commission. But um, if we could, I think I saw a number was like forty-two or something uh, in the past year. Average is around plus or minus forty. Um, uh, dogs that are, or animals that are taken in. And as you said, Kevin, many of whom are, are picked up by their owners uh, shortly thereafter. But if we could look at sort of the data behind that in the last, say, two or three years and then compare it to what for instance, Darien has done with their uh, process and and understand the cost uh, behind that, that would be helpful and compared to what we have. Um, in terms of uh, facility and costs and et cetera. Um, I think that'll better inform us in terms of the way forward.
Of course.
Chief, could I ask you and Allison to put something together and have the police commission consider it first before?
Absolutely.
Come back to us, you know, the possibility of having a special project with the donated funds and a, a, a replacement facility at the transfer station. The transfer station is so convenient for both police officers and residents to, but, to access um, that uh, if we can't repurpose another building, we ought to look at uh, If we can't repurpose another building, we ought to look at. Building a, what's the word, a prethab, prethab building as we are with the. Waystation building. Tiger, do you, Tiger Stone? If Tiger could work with with Allison and bring something to the police commission. That you could then come back to the selectmen. It would have to be a probably a special appropriation request later in the year, but. If they had a matching funds from donated dollars, we. We could probably address that, so.
Absolutely. We'll make that happen.
We actually stayed.
Kevin, yes. Yeah, it's Paul. We have not seen anything from the police commission's point of view on this. And like Kathleen said, we'd like to see some data here. I haven't seen anything. So yeah, we're welcome to to take a hard look at this as soon as we see some facts and figures.
Great. Thank you, Paul.
Thanks.
Thank you. I want to thank you. I want to thank John DeFerico and I want and Andrew Walsh. I mean, you do a great job with leadership. I want to thank all the. Members of the men and women on the force. I mean, you know, we're very proud of our police and the safety they provide. So we thank you and thank you. Leon's one of our best budget presenters and almost as good as Tiger or vice versa. So. I I thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, Kathleen and Nick and Kevin, the budget folder on your tablets, both the police and fire presentation are there. We put them in yesterday. So that's where you can find all of the backup.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Leon. Thank you.
Take care.
Paul, thank you. Moving on, we don't need to take a break because we're going to take a lunch break in. An hour and a half. And no need for a break? Okay.
Fire, fire next.
Good morning, chief. Jack Hennessy and Jack Horner, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Fire Commission, and do we have anybody else out for fire?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Okay, the floor is yours and you have.
I'll keep it under three hours. And I'm trying to figure out how to, here is, share my screen.
Could I just want to mention Larry Kirschner, our consultant still, and we're not going to get to general government until eleven thirty, Larry. So if you want to. Watch, that's fine, but you might want to.
Eleven thirty, okay.
That's that's our plan.
Okay.
And we'll and we'll try to actually do you first.
Grabby great.
Cheryl, so we don't occupy your entire morning.
Happy to be here.
Okay, thank you. Larry Kirschner, I might depress it, inquire who Larry Kirschner is. He is our longtime benefits consultant on the town side. With the firm's name, I can't be old for him. I find it better.
It's epic. Now it's epic. It's easy to remember.
Change of name, but same old, same old folks. Thank you. Go ahead, Jack and John. Jack.
Okay, let's see if I can. I'm trying to change the slide here and there you go. I sent everybody a copy of our annual report earlier in the month. It goes into great detail about what we did in the past year in calendar two thousand twenty. In order to keep this presentation shorter. I've sent a bunch of stuff in advance, a couple of memos and our annual report. So that any questions you might have, you might be answered in these these documents.
An appropriate cover page, Jack. That's great.
It was, it was COVID was two thousand and twenty is COVID. Fiscal, our year-to-date accomplishments. Our new rescue truck is under construction. The chassis has been delivered to the factory up in Watertown. They're building the body now. Paul Payne has replaced Fred Baker as a fire marshal as Fred Baker retired early. Earlier in the year. We maintain our operations under pandemic conditions, which at times is very trying with people that were on in isolation. And restrictions to access of the building. Limited access even for our volunteers in the building. We're very proud of Operation COVID Shield, which was a personal protective equipment distribution. Operation that occurred early in the pandemic where Grace Farms. Had obtained a considerable amount of PPE and it was distributed. By became volunteers throughout the county, was a huge help to hospitals and first responders everywhere. It was a gigantic effort. And our volunteer roster is pretty stable. Our goals for the upcoming year will be to fill the vacant. Yes.
Please say that. Ooh, getting feedback. You just reminded me, Fred Baker, after he retired, had a rather serious accident. With his tractor or something. How's how's Fred doing?
Yes, Fred had an accident. He broke some bones, had a tractor accident. He is healing right now. He's in. Physical therapy. He says he has a limp, but a full recovery is expected.
Terrific.
I just I just saw him last Thursday. He looks really good and he's and he's feeling good too.
That's great. I haven't seen him since he retired, but I have talked to him on the phone a few times.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Our goals for the next fiscal year is to fill the vacant fire inspector position when Paul Payne was promoted to fire marshal. That left, he was our part-time inspector. And he is now at full time, so we'll need to fill that part-time inspector position. We continue to enhance the water supply system. As many of you are aware, we build a lot of, we build dry hydrants as the opportunities arise. We've had a couple of significant fires up in the Dance Highway area. And we have a couple of sites that we hope to be able to install a couple of dry hydrants in that vicinity in the next year or so. We would like to add a career assistant chief at some point in the future this year, next year. We like to improve our volunteer retention and recruitment programs, maintain our current level of service and enhance our regional partnerships. We region, we partner with our regional partners as often as we can in order to improve services and save the town and New Canaan money. We pull money and programs and equipment together and since we don't need all of our equipment all the time. We share with our regional partners and it's been working out very well. Our performance measures are to maintain low property loss and civilian injury rates, increase our volunteer retention and activity levels and. Maintain our pre-plans and data retrieval. Our request, we're looking for a thirty three thousand four hundred and fifty nine dollar increase, which is about two percent over our current year's budget. Ninety seven percent of this is non-discretionary funding, which is basically things that have service contracts or labor agreements. Only three percent of our budget is discretionary. In this budget request, two point, two and a half percent is an increase in the non-discretionary things that we have very little control over. Budget lines that we can't control, we have an eleven percent reduction. And this is basically a diagram just showing where all the money goes. Upper left-hand corner, personnel personnel expenses and all the all our other operating expenses, the blue is what. What personnel cost and the red is all of our other operating costs. Lower right is discretionary, non-discretionary. You can see. The red pie is the only part that we really have any control over. Light item increases and decreases. We asked for an additional hundred fourteen thousand dollars in some of the lines which are itemized. And we also have eighty one thousand dollars worth of decreases. And then that there is thirty three thousand four hundred and fifty nine dollar increase, which is two percent of the current year. These are the lines that the budget drivers use. The increases are part-time salaries went up by thirty two thousand dollars. The reason for that is we. Took our administrative assistant out of the full-time line and transferred it to the part-time line. So that's. No real increase. We just moved it from one line to another. Salaries overtime has been underfunded historically using. Multi-year averaging and looking at projections. We figured that we need the seventeen thousand dollar increase just to break even. Salaries vacation, just additional vacation days have been earned by people due to seniority. Sick and injury, we went back and did historic averaging and these numbers are what we really need. Promotional testing. We have a new promotional testing process and this is what the actual cost is compared to previous years. Educational incentives is also something that's in the CBA as firefighters earn. Additional certifications, there's a stipend that they get. And the other things, fuel, gasoline, water, dues, all basically by guidance and have to do with inflation. Reductions, full-time salaries was reduced by thirty two thousand dollars. That's the transfer of the payroll for our administrative assistant to the part-time line. We reduced our callback, we reduced training, social security. Basically going by the guidance that we receive from town. We're saving money and mobile repairs due to the fleet is in better shape now. So we're spending less money on repairs. And these are basically the. The decreases. Income, fines and fees, false alarms, we do charge for the second false alarm, a hundred dollars. Any other additional. Alarm would be a hundred dollars on top of that. We have very few. That really become second or third or fourth false alarms because the fire marshal's office will basically interact with the property owner early and say, you know, there's a problem with your alarm. Let's get it fixed so we don't have to do this sort of thing. Plan reviews and consultations, any fees revolve aligned with that, go to the building department because it's all part of the same. Permit system and blasting permits. We issue about one a year and they go for sixty bucks. And they're all capped by state statute and we're at the, we're at the maximum. So we're not. Our income is very minimal. Just a couple of quick graphs to show you what our budget has looked like historically. Operating is the blue line. Slight increases every year. The bottom one with the green bars are capital budget. You, the two spiky years are years when we had to replace trucks. Those are generally our big expenses. There is no truck replacement this year. Here's our budget itemized. The middle column says our initial request, our initial request, we had funding in there to request a full-time assistant career chief. I am the only real staff officer during the daytime outside of the fire marshal's office. And the workload can be excessive sometimes. I'm also on call twenty four seven. Which over the years can be quite stressful. Having to be able to respond while off duty. And I live close enough where I'm always listening to the radio, so I know everything that's going on in town. That was removed during the adjustment period when we were talking with the CFO and the first selectman. We would like for that money to be restored at some point in the next fiscal year so that we could discuss putting this person on. I sent you a detailed memo early in the year with all the duties that the career assistant chief would fulfill. And I just think it would be money that would be wisely invested in this department. And that was our operating budget. If anybody has any questions, I can move on to capital.
Yes, Kathy.
I don't know if I'm causing that echo, but thank you very much, chief. I really appreciate just. Just one question on the OT, on the injury. And I can see that while it looks like it's up forty one percent, as you pointed out. It's really fluctuated, hasn't it? I mean, it was as low as thirty eight thousand to as high as a hundred and twenty three thousand. So. Is that my understanding, you're sort of smoothing that out in terms of what potentially it could be? I mean, it's very hard to predict these things indeed.
It is hard to predict and we went by, we looked at the past ten years, actually. I have a very detailed overtime. Study that I can share with you. And we took like the five-year average and we use that number to come up with this number. It doesn't really. It's a dollar figure and not an hour figure, so it's not real accurate, but it's as close as we can really get.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have no questions, chief. It looks like a good budget.
Okay, and I guess we'll move on to capital. We reduced our ask by about. From our five-year plan from eighty thousand to sixty six thousand. It's all basically equipment replacement. We have to replace some SCBA bottles, personal protective equipment. Radio replacement, which is pagers. I know that the town just bought a significant amount of radios in the past couple of years. These were not included in that purchase. This is for pagers and not for two-way radios. Fire station alerting system, our current system is so antiquated that we have three. Systems that we cannibalize in order to keep the one that we have working. I have spare parts all over the place and we basically have to take the older. Components apart to to fix the new ones. And it also goes with the regional dispatch system. They're updating fire station alerting systems for all the stations that are members of the. Regional dispatch and this is part of that program. Fire hose replacement, we test our hose until it fails. Some years we have good years, some years we have bad years. This is a recurring expense. Equipment and tools is something that we put in the budget every other year. We didn't have a request in our last year, but this year with the new rescue truck coming in and some equipment. That is going to be replaced due to age. And the last line is water supply improvement and that would be used for repairing or installing dry hydrants in the northern part of town where there's no municipal water. And you can see from this slide, the reduction from the five-year capital plan, our initial ask was. But we got it down to sixty six. And that's basically our capital budget. Any questions?
And just looking. Sorry, just looking forward, it's mostly going to be these, the pumper replacement, the big items, I guess, are, as you mentioned. In terms of your five-year forecast are largely going to be the the bigger equipment. Is that correct?
That's correct. In the next fiscal year, not in twenty twenty, twenty two to twenty three. Engine two is due for replacement. Engine two actually was due for replacement a while ago. But it's in good physical shape. It doesn't get used as much as the other trucks do. If we stick by this schedule or replace it or we get funded into twenty two, twenty three fiscal year. The truck will be over twenty seven years old when it's finally replaced. Which is, it should have been replaced at twenty years. So we're going to get an extra seven years out of it if we are funded in twenty two, twenty three.
Thank you.
Again, Jack, I have no, I have no questions. Cap, the capex budget looks, looks good.
Okay.
I would, I would just make one comment. Kathleen, are you, any further questions?
No, good.
So the issue of the assistant chief will go to the board of finance. We've talked about possibly, it's really a personnel decision that requires a lot of consideration. And. One. Solution we talked about is perhaps to plan on funding it for a half year starting next January. That would give us plenty of time this year to work on, on. On the process.
That would be great.
Right. So you're on board with that, Jack and Jeff?
Yes, thank you. We appreciate that. We, we understand the magnitude of the. The financing and, but we also understand the the need. And we want to do it right the first time because this will be a permanent position. And if you do it for half a year, meaning we push it out a half year, I think that gives all the parties concerned. Ample time to make sure we do it right.
So what's in your budget currently? Linda, is the full?
It's zero right now.
No, right now, we, we took it out. So if we were to do half, we would have to add.
Nick and Kathleen, we can decide this on Thursday, but you know, perhaps we have to just. Have an inclination right now that we would add back. Add into the budget, the half years cost of assistant and at least is budgeted for if we can achieve that.
I would support that.
What is the funding level requirement?
I believe the position initially was a hundred and twelve and you can correct me, chief. And so. It would be half of that and about thirty percent or so in benefit, social security and and so forth.
Okay.
I'll do the calculations and bring it and bring it Thursday.
I'm supportive, I'm supportive as well.
Okay, so we'll talk about that. I mean, basically, I think we're on agreement on that and we can add that on Thursday with our vote. So. Okay, I don't think it's any further questions.
One quick thing before we're done. I'd just like to thank HR. I see that Cheryl's on the on the line right now and that she's been giving us a lot of help lately with. Pension issues and employee benefits recently and it's been. Taking a great load off of me and and our shoulders here and we want to thank her and her department for that. Thank you.
I concur.
Cheryl?
Thank you.
Chief, thanks for a great presentation. Jack Corner, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. Obviously, we have a great fire department and we appreciate both the full-time guys and the. the volunteers and
We appreciate the support. Thank you very much.
Very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack and Jack.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. God, we're going fast today.
Right.
Who's up next?
So what I'd like to do is leading into general government. We, we said we would have Larry go first. I believe he is still on the call. We told him eleven-thirty, but it's eleven.
He is on his way to his office. So if we can give him about ten minutes, he can jump back on.
Linda, why don't you take ten, ten or fifteen minutes by the time Larry arrives?
Sure. So let's turn to page eighteen of your packet. And I see, I see Diane on the line, and so maybe we can kind of walk through. There are a couple of them. We do have some pension and OPEB lines and insurance liability. So I'll just start with a pension and OPEB. That number, again, I'll let you speak to these numbers. But these numbers were provided to us. There's actually a one point eight percent decrease. Year over year, our town pension contribution will be one point six million and the OPEB contribution is two seventy-nine. This is actually a decrease of what we had initially projected when we were going into the process. And we found this once we started the process. So it's actually about a hundred thousand dollars less going into the numbers. But then I'll let you speak to those two, two numbers.
Okay, sure. Hooker and Holcomb just completed their July one, twenty twenty valuation and presented to the board of finance earlier this month and they accepted the valuation results. The pension component, the contribution the town has to make is going up partly because we put forth new assumptions, one on mortality, which with people living longer, that caused our liability to go up. And then the other one was just inflation. That actually came down there, inflation assumption. So overall, as Linda said, the amount that they are recommending as their ADAC, the actuarially determined employer contribution for fiscal twenty twenty-two is one million, six forty-seven, one eight zero. We're still very well funded, but it is recommended and the board of finance agreed with fully funding the ADEC. As most towns do. Regarding the OPEB, part of the reason the contribution that the town has to make to the trust is going down is because Hooker and Holcomb is expecting lower benefit payments. So hopefully that will materialize. And our trend, again, we've been funding it. As many of you know, years ago, five hundred thousand, and then we dropped it to four hundred thousand based on just the corpus building up. So now the actuarial value, excuse me, actuarial evaluation just shows that for twenty twenty-two, the contribution to the trust is two hundred seventy-nine thousand, nine eighty-one.
And Diane, the the trust is managed the same way as the pension fund in terms of this?
Well, yes, but we are not running benefit payments through it yet. So unlike the pension plan where we're paying out in retirees pensions. We're not paying any money out of the OPEB trust fund that's roughly
As far as the investment of the funds, they're being
Correct.
in parallel to the, to the philosophy of the pension fund.
Correct. Yes, they have the same investment portfolio. They both earned roughly six percent on a money-weighted basis last year compared to the six and three quarters, but our town actually did very well with our returns last year compared to other towns. So.
Hi Diane.
Hi Kathleen.
So just on the, you mentioned, so we're fully funded on the pension, a hundred percent or a hundred more?
Yes, or like a hundred and six.
Hundred and six, okay. And then how about the OPEB? I remember when we started to, to started to fund that, we were maybe closer to sorry, eighty percent or so. Where are we now?
Well, well, we've been going up. I don't think we've ever really hit eighty. We are funded at sixty, sorry, sixty-eight percent.
Okay, so that's why we're not withdrawing anything from OPEB just yet until you hit a certain amount?
Right. I think the last one we talked to Hooker and Holcomb, they said probably with the next valuation, which would be the July one, twenty twenty-two. We could start looking at you know, possibly putting the benefit payments through. So right now we've been just building, building it all up. Not many towns are really running their benefits. There, a lot of them are doing it the way we are.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Is that a hundred and six percent best practices?
Well, different towns, it's kind of all over the board. You know, some towns are even overfunded like we are and even have a lower required rate of return like Darien. But then you have towns like Westport who has, you know, a six, six and a quarter required rate of return and they are not fully funded at that rate. If we all were on a level playing field at seven percent, then yes, everybody would be in our in our group, which that we compare ourselves to that we benchmark, which is Fairfield, Greenwich, Darien, Westport, Ridgefield, Wilton.
Usual suspects.
Correct. And we fall, we fall right in the middle. Excuse me?
I'm sorry, what, what was our assumed rate?
Six point seven five.
Yeah, as you know, as you know, we have a separate board of finance subcommittee called, what's it called, Diane?
Right, the retirement plans advisory committee.
Right. So they make those decisions. And I would make two comments too.
Going back to the internal service fund and the health insurance. The non-teacher employees of the board of ed such as custodians and cafeteria workers and other personnel are in the town's retirement plan. So we're providing benefit, retirement benefits to those employees. That all the teachers are on the state retirement system by law. They don't have a choice. And also teachers do not receive, receive social security. I don't know if the, if the other employees with the board of ed receive social security. And I think also the police department doesn't receive social security. Is that correct? I think.
Yes, that's correct.
Which is kind of a anomaly. But also so it's true that the other board of, the non-teacher board of ed employees don't receive social security or they do?
I think they do. I mean, if
They do.
They do.
Yeah. So that's a consideration in terms of how people are planning for their retirement and how much they're getting from pension plan versus, you know, the, the addition of social security. The teachers do not receive social security, nor do the policemen. And that's something to keep in mind in terms of, but the, the principle of providing benefits, I think the town of Greenwich provides all their benefits, including health to their board of ed employees. And therefore the internal service fund, but they, but they don't, they don't self-insure either. So we self-insure. If you're going to be an insurance company, you got to decide how you're going to fund your future obligations or at least reserve for them because there's no regulatory legal requirement over how you fund your health benefits. Is that yet for this?
Before we move on, can I just ask, there's three people with phone numbers here that I just need to know who they are.
Actually, if you'd ask them also, they to display their names.
You could rename yourself with, rather than your phone number, I see eight oh three five nine six four, nine one seven, phone number, five nine four, three oh six three. If you could please just rename yourselves.
This is for security purposes. We don't
Little right hand, if you hit the, there's three dots, if you hover over your box and there's three three dots that you can say rename.
I think if they're dialed in, they can't do it, but you can do it for them.
Okay, if they could just tell me who they are again, two oh three, eight oh three, five nine six four. Nine one seven, two eight two, one two two one. We, we keep the chat function off on this meeting. We always have.
Five nine four is a town employee likely.
Yes, I agree, but I would like to know who they are for attendance purposes and security.
This is Joanne Noon. I have the nine one seven, two eight two, one two two.
Thank you. I'll rename.
Are the others identified?
No, five nine four, three, I can figure out, but who's two oh three, eight oh three, five nine six four? I'm going to mute you, whoever you are, because you're not muted. And same with the five nine four, three oh six three.
Okay, Linda, I think you're back on. And actually, Larry joined us yet?
He's hopping on right now.
Is this an appropriate time?
The next one, just to kind of go through the general government ones, we do have insurance liability. And this is basically what we pay with Karma. We don't have those. We don't have those rates yet. And therefore what we have in there is a three and a half percent increase, which is typically what we've done each year and then usually around March or April, sure, if I'm wrong, is when we actually get the notice. And then we make that adjustment just before the board of finance or town council votes on the budget. So we adopt a budget with the, with the final numbers, but at this point in the year, we don't know. So we typically go with the assumed three and a half percent, which is close to what what we've been trending. And I do see Larry is now on. What I'd like to do, are there any questions on insurance before I take through that? Okay.
We generally get a dividend back from Karma.
We do. We also get a dividend back from Karma. So on the health insurance, before Larry, let's go ahead, Cheryl.
With COVID, Kevin, that will be delayed. So we won't know about that dividend until probably, I would say another three to four months.
And how, how much is the dividend?
We get anywhere from thirty thousand to over a hundred thousand, depending on the year.
Karma's a mutual company. For a hundred and sixty of the hundred sixty-nine towns and cities of Connecticut, so. And this, besides what they provide us in terms of protection, they also provide terrific service in terms of claims processing and claims handling and advice on risk management, that type of thing. Anyway, Larry, you're, you're back on and
I'm here.
You have the floor, Larry. Larry Kershner, I can
Before Larry speaks, let me kind of walk you, introduce you how the, the funds are set up. So beginning on page eighteen. You'll see the insurance benefits and there are a couple of lines. The first one is the contribution to the town health insurance fund. And so this is where the funds move out of the general fund to go into the internal service. And that's where we account for these expenses that Larry is about is about to, to go over. And within that fund, we also have our four oh one A employer contributions. This is the portion that the town takes for the board of ed. For the town funds, town departments, that number is included within each budget line. For the board of ed, our contribution is funded out of this, of this line. So we see what that number is there. And then we have another item, unemployment comp, which is a calculated number based on our experience. And then the town does have a wellness program. And so those are the three items on the general fund side that are paid out of this account. So now to go to what Larry's about to speak to, as Kevin was saying. Currently, we have two separate funds, a town board of ed, a town in health insurance fund and a board of ed insurance funds. And so if you go to page forty-one of your sheet, page forty-one is the town health insurance fund. And therefore you'll see the contributions from the general fund that go into this fund come in as revenues into this fund. But we also have other contributions and revenue sources that go into this fund. Each employee pays a share of the health insurance. So those revenues are also included on here. We do have some COVID deposits that go in this fund. And then this year we were, we've also been doing COVID testing. And we have been paying COVID testing out of this fund with the corresponding reimbursements going out of this fund. So if you look at that year-to-date number, you'll see on the revenues, you'll see COVID deposit. And then you'll see reimbursements for COVID community testing. So you could see what those reimbursements have been received year-to-date. And on the expense side, at the very bottom, you'll see what we calculated as the cost of, on the town side community testing for COVID.
Yeah, London, let's clarify that. You know, we're not paying for the resident community testing. We're paying for town employees who otherwise would be, are insured. And, and the superintendent on his side is is paying for community test, I'm sorry, for teacher testing out of the fund. So and, and those costs would otherwise be insured, but the community testing that's going on right now primarily residents, but any teacher or town employee can go over and get tested as well is being, is being paid for by their insurance, private insurance company.
The bulk of the expenses are insurance premiums and insurance payments for town employees. And I believe this is what Larry is getting ready to speak to, but you could see on there our historical year-to-date year-to-date expenses and our historical trends, including what we're projecting moving forward. So with that, I'm going to toss it, toss it to you, Larry.
I, I, Linda, I lost it. Who, who prepared this slide?
This is my slide, Kevin.
So Larry, I have this thing about outside consultants because although it says town and decan at the top. This is Larry's slide and because I would never say we are punishing this up-loss insurer.
I will, I will resend it to you with my logo at the bottom. Funny you mention that because the other slides we have in here are all of our logo on it.
I used to have, I used to have a fight on Wall Street about McKinsey producing documents that said things that I wouldn't say to the firm I work with. And I, I argue with the consultant about it's your document, not our document, so.
So I was just happy to learn today that the police aren't pulling as many people over as they used to. So. You always learn something new every day. So, so what I wanted to just go through, as I usually do, are just relevant points about the program. And obviously answer any questions as it relates to, to the budget projection. I'll say that, you know, we, we approach this a little bit differently than the board of that, obviously, as, as you know by now. And we, we, we try and run this program, if you will, as thin as possible. You know, using normal and standard underwriting practices. So basically key discussion points. Three plus years here of results and fiscal year eighteen, we ran twelve percent under budget, under the accrual. We talk about accruals, those are the budget, budgeted premiums that we set for the budget, for the basis of employee contribution percentages and things like that. So we ran twelve percent under fiscal year nineteen, we ran four percent under. We ran right on the number, just closing out fiscal year twenty. And we definitely were aided by some good experience in the last quarter of the fiscal year as it relates to claim suppression, which we talked about a little bit before. And then this year we're running, we got off to a good start and we, we were running right on the projected number through December. But we've seen the last few months, a dramatic increase in in costs. December was a horrific month. We'll talk more about that as we get to number three. So so even, you know, even though we're running, you know, very close to, you know, we, we feel good about what we've projected in the past and obviously going forward. So we're looking for a slight modification to the accruals for fiscal year twenty-two. And again, the key point is we're still you know, only six months into this year. And we still have some experience evolving and we'll have a clearer picture as we turn the corner into the latter part of the winter, early spring.
Comment here? We, we're starting here at fiscal year eighteen and you know, we've been running from five point four five point five to six half million dollars. I, is I, this is something Kathleen and I accomplished when we were on the town council to convince the town to move to being self-insured. I think our, our fully insured number prior to eighteen or seventeen was eight million dollars a year or something.
Yeah, you guys have been the poster child for self-insurance. Absolutely.
We really have saved a ton of money.
Ton of money.
Part of that is because you don't pay taxes on premiums or as a self-insured. Part of that is because you don't pay taxes on premiums or as a self insured. And there's several things that make up that, those savings. But self insurance and the Board of Ed has saved a ton of money over their, their last 10 or 12 years. They've been self insured. So.
Absolutely. In that, in that $7 million figure, you probably had 10 to 15% of taxes, fees, assessments and the insurance company's risk charge for giving you a fully insured guarantee cost program. So.
You know, that, actually part of that was Obamacare where they, they taxed the private employer plans in order to pay for Obamacare.
Yes, 4%. So 4% in fully insured plans. And that 4% is going up because it's only for fully insured plans. And the, and the more, more groups that go self insured, the numerator is getting smaller and the denominator staying the same. So the tax is going up. Then you have the state of Connecticut state premium tax, which is roughly 3%. Then you have the other blue crosses of the world in the, that charge you for a risk charge and profit of probably upwards of 5% for giving you a guaranteed cost arrangement. So you've saved a ton of money. And, you know, so that's a good segue. So, so we've been right on, and you can see over here to the right, the pre per employee per month accruals, the budgeting's been relatively flat. I mean, we, you know, fiscal year 18, we were budgeting roughly $2,171 a month for per person. And, you know, now almost five years later, we're only up about a little under 7% in an, in an environment where you have roughly 6 to 9% medical inflation. So annual. So the plan's performed very well. It's performed right on budget. We saved a lot of money. So now we kind of shift the conversation. I think it's important just for you to know, and I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, is demographically, you know, our, our population's getting older. And you don't have an environment here, this isn't like a tech company where, you know, you're infusing a lot of new blood into the program that's relatively young and healthy. So our, our population's aging and it's, it's static. So that's something that, that, you know, actuarially, for every year a group gets older of the age of 41, utilization goes up 7%. As we know, as we all get older, we use more medical services. That's just the way it is.
Larry, comment on plan design in terms of going from PPO to.
That helped. That helped. Like the Board of Ed, we've aggressively moved people. We have almost all of our people in the high deductible health plan, health savings account arrangement, which has given the town another lever, if you will, to, to, to control costs. And it's been well received and we're starting to pull some levers there in terms of reducing the town's contributions to the HSA, having people pay more of their premium share as a result of the CBAs. So we've got people in the plans that we want. The, the biggest issue we have is really number three. We have, this is a really telling chart. And it's kind of the good news and the bad news. The, this is here, you know, number of people under the plan, those would be employees or dependents that exceed $50,000 in annual spend. So you can see in fiscal year 19, we had 21, 20, we had 19. This year through six months, we're at nine. So we are, and we've built in 20 into the projection. So what this is telling us here is that we have a very static base of people that use a lot of medical care. We've got some, some significant high cost claimants. And here, as we work our way to the right, what this is, is basically an exhibit. I know we have this conversation all the time about our stop loss threshold. And as I get older, I'm definitely more conservative in that the $100,000 stop loss level has really worked well for the town. Because you can see here, and as Kevin alluded to, the word punishing. We, you know, fiscal year 19, we did, the stop loss insurer did okay. 85% loss ratio. They probably want to run their book at about 75%, but they did okay. But you can see the last two years now, we ended up fiscal year with 830 in premium and stop loss refunds over a million, almost a million one. Loss ratio 120%, 127%. Year to date, we're already at 94%. And we're now headed into the bad part of the year for the stop loss carry. Because the deductible resets at 100,000 on July 1st. And the costs matriculate after July 1st. So now we're headed into the, the latter part of the year where we have people that have accumulated a lot of money towards the deductible. And we're going to be deep into the stop loss insurers pocket for 21, for fiscal year 21, which is, you know, that's life in the big city, you know, that's insurance. We've, and that's what that's doing though, the lower deductible is providing stability in costs and the overall cost. So we've, we've assumed a, you know, we've assumed a pretty decent increase in the stop loss costs. It built into our projection for fiscal year 22. I'll also mention that we, it's been really good, the, the buying, the collective buying we've done with the Board of Ed, because the Board of Ed's experience has been really good over the last few years and ours has been bad. And that's helped us. But this year, the Board of Ed, they've got a claimant over a million dollars. They've got some, you know, we're not going to be holding as many cards in the deck this year as we head towards the stop loss renewal, because they have some, some emerging claimants. And we have some significant conditions on our, on our plan, you know, cancers and some, some things that are very concerning that are going to be ongoing. So whatever, so we, you know, we, we have to factor that in and we'll do all the due diligence we normally do and beat that down as best we can.
Larry, let's point out too, that the Board of Finance had the Board of Education shift to a $300,000 per, per participant deduct, what's, is it called deductible?
Yeah, yeah.
Whereas the town's at 100,000. So if we had, if we were at a $300,000 right now, we would be getting, we'd be getting hurting compared to.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah. We would have saved some money in premium, but the way the claims are flowing.
Yeah.
And some of these claims are graduating, you know, we're seeing, you know, 500, 600, 700,000 dollar a year claims. So.
And how many years have we bought the stop loss together with the Board of Ed? Two years?
Uh, no, we're, we're now into about our fourth year, I believe.
So yeah, right. I was just going to ask that. So that was one of the things that we've done town wise and Board of Ed combined to do the stop losses of carrier there. Is that?
Voya Financial.
Voya, okay. And, and they allow us to split so that all the town employees are 100,000 stop loss and the Board of Ed is 300?
Yeah.
They, they allow us to differentiate there? Okay. Okay. Great.
Yeah. So, so we're, we're pooling about a million and a half dollars in stop loss premium towards the total risk Board of Ed and, and town employees.
And, and there's no issue with the fact that the Board of Ed starts their insurance on, I think it's, is it September 1st or October 1st and, and the town does July 1st?
No issue.
No issue.
And, and I think before Voya, it was Berkshire Hathaway?
That's correct.
Yeah.
So that, you know, that's a very competitive market. They look at your experience and they, they price it. So.
You're, you're right Kevin. There, the, you know, there's four national health insurers left and there's about 25 reinsurer stop loss providers out there. That's where all the money's gone as 85% of the country is now under self insured plans. That's where all the money is. And, you know, we market it every year. We'll do it this year and we'll, you know, we'll see. The, you know, we're not, again, we're not holding a lot of cards because the, a lot of our claimants are ongoing.
Right. Another thing to be said, I don't know if you know Larry, but Kathleen has been serving as a director of Mass Mutual for a number of years and Nick is an insurance lawyer, more of an M and A insurance lawyer. But the fact of the matter is, you know, our, our Board of Finance really gets this stuff now. And therefore if you're going to be an insurance company, you've got to look carefully at what you're trying to accomplish and understand the markets and understand what we can do with plan design. So.
I mean, Kevin, I think, you know, the big picture is, and it's a story that, that really hasn't been told, but you, you brought it up and kudos to you and Kathleen for your service on the Town Council in addressing this issue of self insurance. I'm an M and A lawyer. In fact, I, I purchased the Mass Mutual's health operations for Anthem a number of years ago. But I also do regulatory work and I do a lot of captive work, risk retention groups, purchasing groups. And it's incredible, the savings that this town's achieved by going to a self insurance plan. I think it's, it's, it's just a great story. And I, I set up a captive for the Winklevoss twins earlier this year. And they're, because they see cyber as, you know, an area that's, that's growing and has a, has a need. But, you know, it's, it's, it's great that we went to self insurance plan, platform. And yeah, we're going to have, we're going to have good years and, and bad years. That's insurance. And there's not much we can do about it. You know, it sounds like we've got some, some, some big ticket potential claims or existing claims.
Yeah, we're on, we're on the same market though. And the other thing I'm, a point I'd make is we, we decided, you know, this, the state has been attracting municipalities into their state plan. And some of our neighbors have, have joined, but you get, they give you great pricing for the first year and then they quickly realize, then tell you, well, Fairfield County, we're going to put into a risk, different risk pool. And so the experience over time hasn't been so great for those who made that choice. And I don't know whether the state plan Larry pays all the taxes that a private plan does under, but.
Well, that's, that's a self insured plan as well.
So Larry, I gotta ask the, you know, with respect to the severity of some of these, these claims, is that, is that a trend or is that a one off?
Well, it's. So here.
Okay.
This was fiscal year 19. So here you can see we had 21 people over 50,000 and our top claim was 375,000. But a lot in this corridor, we had half in the corridor of 100 to 375. Then last year, you can see, so we had, we had, we had 19 people. But, and again, still only about nine, eight or nine over the 100,000. But our top, look at our top three, we're now, you know, half a million, 400,000, 320,000. So, so this is my point about punishing the reinsurer. We, you know, we, we're starting to see these graduate up to some big dollars. And to Kevin's point, if we were at $300,000 deductible, we would have taken, you know, 600,000, you're just on the top three. And then here, year to date, you can see we're, we're already at nine halfway through the year. So we're trending, you know, exactly as we've had. But again, our top two are already at over 225, a quarter of a million dollars. And these other ones, you know, the other part of this is that, and I took the diagnosis information off this chart. When you look at the diagnoses on, let's say the year that we just completed, these are, these, 90% of these are ongoing. So if you were an insurance company looking at this, it's like your property and casualty insurance. It's like, right? You know, the, like looking at the police station building, like, right? We got floor issues, we got roof issues, you know, fire, you know, we got, we have proper fire equipment, whatever. The reinsurance market's going to look at, okay, yeah, let's look at the experience, but we're more focused on the going forward and the folks with leukemia and, and, and the ongoing conditions. So now that, so, you know, the good news though, and, and there's always a silver lining, is that we have a very predictable large claimant base that we're building into the underwriting program for the future. So that's, you know, we're building, like I said, 20 people into the calculation over 50,000 next year. So what, what that does is it, it, it gives us predictability there because we have these large claimants in our underlying claim base. So bad news is, like I said, higher severity, we're going to have, you know, some challenges in the reinsurance market. Not overly concerned though. And the positive though, we have.
They will get some of it back because, because our experience will hurt us in the renewal. And, and also I think the case is that Obamacare had a change, the, the fact that you can't have lifetime caps anymore. Some, some private employers had lifetime caps of a million or $2 million for, so an employee could actually cap out for, for health insurance based upon that experience. And then after that, the, the employee was a lot, you know, basically a lot of.
Yeah. We're seeing claims $2 million. We're seeing huge claims now, especially in the, you know, a lot of specialty pharma. And these are great treatments that are coming to market, but they're, they're very, very expensive. And especially in the area of oncology as well. So this is a problem for every payer out there, whether you're town, municipality, private employer, government entity. It's.
But Larry, as, as to your point, and this is, the members are 541 members of the plan. If we increase our risk pool by combining those who are under the Board of Ed plan with the, the town plan, that increase in the risk pool, I, I don't know where the crossover is, but what sort of savings do you think we, one could get if we did combine those two pools?
I don't, I don't think we'll see any, any savings because the, you know, claims are claims.
Right.
You know, there's things that we should still be looking at. And I need to talk to Joe Spurgeon about things like pharmacy, you know, moving the purchasing of pharmacy maybe to a more of a collective approach. But if, if you combine, it, it, it becomes an accounting, it becomes an accounting. If you combine the funds, then theoretically you could look at, you know, one increase over the, the whole entity. So, but I don't know how happy the Board of Ed would be if they were subsidizing our plan and vice versa. So.
I understand. Setting all that aside, just, just a larger pool, would that just, you know, I would think that we'd see a decline in terms of the premium costs. There'd be better risk sharing, et cetera. I, I understand, you know, some of the issues that people have, but just would a bigger pool on behalf of the entire town, wherever the sources came from, would that be better for us or no?
I, I, I think you're both self insured. At the end of the day, you're both, you're talking about basically.
The larger you are, the better, it's, it's not any better, is that what you're saying?
When, when you're both self, maybe some lower administrative fees. But those are very small pieces of the program. 90% of your costs are claims.
Yeah.
Directly attributable to plan design.
So minimal, minimal opportunity here.
Minimal. I, I don't think that, yeah, I think there's real, you know, like we were talking about before, I think there's real benefit to the town to combine the services fund and to get away from, you know, and to change how you're budgeting in the BOE. I think that's where the savings is.
Okay.
Can you, can you talk about size relative to, on the Board of Ed side versus our, our component in terms of numbers of insureds?
So we have roughly 205 or so employees. They have close to, I think, 750.
Plus, plus family members.
Right.
You have participants, you have participants, which are.
Right. We, and this goes back to demographics as well. We, we, and this chart is the monthly experience here. So we have right now 203 employees and 537 members belly buttons, if you will. So our contract ratio is about 2.6. So we have a lot of families covered under this program versus the Board of Ed. Last time I looked, their contract size was smaller. Although they have more employees, they are, they have a lot more people, a lot more singles. A lot of younger teachers that aren't yet married or covering dependents versus our demographic where we've got older people with families and our plan's obviously attractive to them.
And also keep in mind, 24 of those members are from the library. So it's a combination between the library and the town.
So.
I mean, the other thing, point to be made though, too, is that the employees like their coverage. And they build up a HSA balance over time. And they build up a HSA balance over time that they can see and makes sense to them.
With Kathleen, going back to your point, we have to focus on areas where we can, like pharmacy's a big one. Where I think, uh, that's, again, like stop loss, it's a commodity, you know, where we can.
That's a separate plan? I mean, we, we.
Yeah, but, you know, pharmaceuticals are, you know, you go to the drugstore, it's the underlying financials, so there's buying power there. We can, and that's something that we have to really look at with the BOE.
Okay.
Um, just touching on COVID real quick, we, 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 uh, like the BOE, we definitely had, um, um, a suppression in cost in Q, late Q two, early Q three, uh, just because people were locked down and didn't go to the doctor for elective procedures. But the other side, we had a few, uh, significant COVID claims come through, so we were not immune to, uh, to that exposure and that's built into our, into the cost. Um, and then for, uh, a sub of cost going forward, we, we, we utilized data through October. We added an eight percent load, you saw from the board before they added about nine. Um, just to account for the fact that we had that period in our experience that was suppressed. So we added an eight percent load to normalize it. Um, and, you know, as I mentioned previously, we should definitely revisit. The, the plan, you know, we did the, the last projection with data through October, November and December were bad months. If you go back and historically look at your plan, um, and I'm just bringing this up over here. The, the loss ratio over here on the second column in from the right, you can see the last three months have been bad. But historically, this is the prior year, you know, we have some really bad months, we have some really good months. So I would expect it to revert, uh, um, as, as more and more people get into the stop loss reimbursement as well. So kind of, you know, wrapping up, um, a- and we kind of talked about this already. We're at almost a hundred percent HSA plan participation. We, we have, uh, been, um, pushing for, uh, the HSA funding reduction into people's accounts. We were gener- very generous as the program got off the ground the last few years. Um, we've been making, we continue to make plan design changes and more cost shifting to members. Uh, and obviously employee contributions are going up, uh, as, uh, as the accruals go up and also in the CBAs, uh, Cheryl and team have built in escalators each year on a percentage basis. So someone that's paying fifteen percent of the cost this year may pay fifteen point five next year, sixteen percent next year, things like that. Um, couple of things. Very, uh, kind of in focus right now and, and we're really trying to emphasize virtual health, ver- very important. Uh, people that are isolated, uh, virtual health is obviously really taken off during this pandemic. Uh, people, um, doing, uh, um, FaceTime. You know, interacting with providers in a totally different manner than they're used to. Real emphasis on mental health is obviously has been very difficult, as you know, uh, across the board. So really, uh, pushing, uh, mental health resources, uh, to plan members. Um, this is obviously very important, COVID support. Our organization is doing a lot, uh, with, around information and, and just helping employers around this whole testing and vaccination maze that, that we are, uh, headed into. And Kevin alluded to, uh, this short, shortness of supply, just, just general questions that a lot of employers have around. Can I require my employees to be vaccinated, uh, to work here, you know, things like that? And then, and, and as, uh, we, we always have, uh, you know, the ongoing wellness program. And, and again, trying to emphasize healthier lifestyles and, and things like that, because that has a direct correlation to our claims.
Further questions, Nick or Kathleen?
Oh, only that I would, uh, let's, let's take up the, uh, the pharma, uh, at least the data collection and see what the last five years has looked like, um, for both the town and the Board of Education in terms of costs and benefits for each and, and what, uh, potential savings might be.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the frontier. You know, the other thing, you know, their plan is well situated with Cigna, our, our plan with Blue Cross, self insured, we've got the combined reinsurance. The next frontier is, is pharmacy, because that is, you know, we, we're not gonna change anyone's behaviors, they're still gonna go to CVS, Walgreens, you know, whatever. But the underlying financials can be, could be significantly.
Yeah.
We can lob ten to twenty percent savings off of, uh, that, that, that could be, you know, quarter of a million dollars right there.
Yeah, and the idea of a, of one internal service fund is not to, uh, Larry mentioned, you know, the Board of Ed subsidizing our plan. The reality is, we want to take the health out of the equation altogether and not look at that as part of operating. Because we're operating town services and we're operating education. He- he- health benefits are really what they are and you gotta manage as a, at best, as best you can. And if, so what, what I envision is Larry and Joe would get together and make a joint recommendation as to how much we need to put into one internal service fund. Uh, and then we would each present our operating budgets and they stand alone, uh, regardless of, uh, obviously, plan design is always an ongoing issue. I mean, if you want to try to improve your, as you go into collective bargaining, you wanna, you wanna try to make sure that, um, plan design is part of that discussion. Because, uh.
But again, getting to Kathleen's point, I mean, yeah, I think we should definitely start with pharma. Um, but ultimately, I think we should take a look at putting the politics aside. Um, at the Board of Ed or otherwise, you know, at combining the two, the two cohorts to see, you know, is there a long-term savings by doing that to the town? At, at the end of the day, it's all, it's all the town's money, whether it's Board of Ed or money for, for the town's plan. And I, and I think, Kim, that gets to your point is kind of, the, almost de-politicizing, um, health expenditures.
Yeah, and there's no, you know, the, historically, the Board of Ed has been concerned about personal liability as a member, but, but the reality is behind the, behind the multimillion dollar reserve fund we have, we have a, currently a thirty million dollar general fund balance. So talking about being an insurance company, we have reserves, but we also have, uh, unusually, uh, generous general fund balance to, to support all of our obligations, so.
Uh, can we get just maybe a study of, of maybe the, the district reference group, but just how other towns and Board of Eds are doing it?
Cheryl.
Yes, I actually reached out to CCM this morning to ask that question, so when I get that data, I will pass it on.
Great, thank you.
I actually reached out, um, yesterday, I was in touch with, um, I'm one of the member of the executive board of the Connecticut GFOA. And so I just reached out to my, uh, board members, um, anecdotally, all of them have a joint fund. Um, I just heard from Norwalk, which, which is huge, uh, they also have a joint fund. Um, so does Greenwich, so does Derryan. Um, and so I think we are probably the exception rather than the rule in terms of having two separate funds, but we'll wait to hear, um, from Cheryl. Your pool is greater than the pool that I did at MC. Uh, Larry, could you comment? And no, earlier in the discussions, we talked about, uh, library claims, since they're part of ours and they're a significant portion of, um, of our claim, not a significant, but they contribute.
It's, it is, it's been a bad, you know, we, um, you know, we took the library back into our self insured plan and their costs are running, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars a year. And that's hurt our, you know, if you, if, if you remember that chart I just showed, you know, we ran twelve percent under back, uh, you know, fiscal year eighteen and then we added the library back in. And again, we're running right on the number, but the library has some significant ongoing claimants uh, there and their, their cost is significant to the program.
How come we don't show any year to date data on them yet? They just haven't.
We have put them under Kathleen, under us as a pool. Um, we've kind of talked back and forth about that. When we showed their separate numbers, that was actually when they had a separate plan. Um, because we're self insured, we don't necessarily cut them out of our large pool. Um, but I know Larry could, could get you those numbers.
Here, let's, uh.
Uh, I guess I'm looking at the cost or the budget amount at eight hundred thousand. But I don't see what their actual expenditures were year to date.
Right, because that's been what, what we do on the town side and Larry has the breakdown. On the town side, we budget for them separately based on numbers we get from Larry.
Right.
But from an accounting standpoint, we pay for them together.
Okay.
So we don't track them separately on an actual basis, but Larry does, and so he, he has the numbers.
That's okay, we can do it offline, I don't wanna take up too much time, but we, we can do it offline.
So yeah, here, I don't know, can you see this? Vis- this is busy here, uh, so the library. Their costs on the just completed plan year, fiscal year, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand versus the accrual of four hundred and seven thousand. So basically that if we had a pinpoint, you know, where the majority of our costs, you know, in terms of over accrual. Now, obviously, the, 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 the rest of the group ran under, so, because we ended up the year right on the number. But there, and you can see these, uh, spikes here, th- they, they have a couple of really bad claimants in there. So they're, they're, they're the big offender right now.
And I think Larry, to jump in, um, in regards to self insurance, yes, this year it's focused on them, but I think last year it was focused on us. So I think as a pool, um, we need to really look at the numbers that are over the stop loss, but maybe not focus on one group.
Agreed.
Yeah.
I think we gotta move on, Larry, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, everybody, great to see you, can't wait till we can be in person again.
Okay.
Thank you, Larry.
Take care, bye-bye.
Linda, where do we go next?
Sure, um, I'll walk through the remainder of the general government. I do see that there's some department representatives here, so if you have specific questions, we can call them out, so I'm just gonna go down the list. Um, the first selectmen budget is on page thirteen. Uh, year over year, on page thirteen, a year over year, that budget actually is going down four and a half percent, um, among the drivers. Obviously, we've had a change in personnel in the, um, town administrator, and so there is a salary differential. Uh, that's accounting for that. And then we also had a slight reduction in meals and entertainment. Um, but over, all, all in all, that is going down four and a half percent year over year. Um, the Board of Finance will be considering and maybe, uh, will be considering compensation. Um, this is reviewed every, should be reviewed every two years, I believe. And so they will be looking at, um, first selectmen and the selectmen. But that will be discussed at the Board of Finance level and then whatever is, um, sort of code at that point, we'll make that adjustments to, to that budget. The next one in general gu- and feel free to start me if I'm moving too fast. Uh, finance is on page fourteen. Um, fourteen on the expenses and then I'll also talk about the revenues that are booked under finance. We don't, we don't generate any of the revenues, but for accounting purposes, uh, they're accounting for the finance. Year over year, you'll see that increase is three percent. We do have an increase in part-time. Uh, basically, this is reallocating of a position. We do have a part-time position that's being split between finance, um, public works, um, and I believe of registrar voters, and therefore that is driving, um, some, some of the increases. We do have a line for an, an internal audit function. Uh, this is something that the Audit Committee has been wanting to do. They haven't yet decided on who will be performing the function, but there is a line in the budget for the internal audit function and it's the professional services, special audit. We do a series of special audits throughout the year. Um, like last year, we did one just of our cash management practices and so that is paid out of that particular line item. Tax assessor and tax collector.
Oh, just, just a quick one, I'm curious, um, Linda, just travel expenses? It's seems that your group actually has the most in terms of travel costs. It's not an increase year over year, but it's just, it's in terms of the amount, is that?
Right, so in finance, we have two members, myself and Joanne, who are GFOA.
Yeah.
GFOA members, so that includes the GFOA in National Conference. But we also pay out of that account, um, we pay for things like the GFOA Budget Book Award, uh, we use, we use that account, we probably shouldn't be using that travel account. But that's where we pay, we pay that out of. But primarily is that, and you'll see that last year, in twenty nineteen, we had forty-five hundred and those were GFOA travel, um, we also attend, we didn't attend this year because of COVID.
Right.
But we also have the munis, uh, we were planning to send somebody to munis just to kind of enhance our capability of munis, but that's what covers, um, those lines, um. And I can get you the specifics if you want, the, the detailed breakdown of the historical.
That seems like there's too many things stuffed into that line, this, this, I don't think you're spending that much on travel, but just a.
I'm in Illinois out of state.
Okay, okay.
Uh, tax assessor and tax collector, I'll, I'll group those together, uh, primarily is, is personnel, that's what drives those budgets. Uh, both of those are employees, non-department heads are in the town hall union. And because the town hall union has an existing contract in place, so those increases are within the department budget. Whereas other unions, DPW, or police and fire, because we haven't, we don't have new contracts, those salaries are, salaries increases are in contingencies. And so tax assessor, tax collector, um, and town clerk as well are primarily driven by, uh, wage and salary increases. So the tax assessor is going up three point nine percent. Primarily, like I said, is the salaries, most of the other lines, if you look through, they're either flat. Um, I think, yeah, they are, they are. And, and the same applies to the tax collector, the tax collector budget is actually going down point eight percent, uh, year over year. Um, that is driven by a reduction in estimated part-time expenses year over year. Um, and then they did have some reductions in other miscellaneous, miscellaneous line items. Legal, uh, department is also included within general government, we've kept that flat, uh, at three hundred. Um, and Cheryl, you can comment on this, we, we sometimes do see spikes, especially in years where we go into union um, negotiations, uh, we have additional expenses. Um, at this time, we feel that the three hundred will cover us for that. And then if we do go over, we also have some contingency funds, uh, that we would apply, um, towards that. But Cheryl, I'd like to speak to, to that specifically, that union piece of it.
We do have three union contracts coming up, police, fire and public works. Um, I am confident that we will be able to settle these contracts without heading into arbitration. So I'm not concerned about the, the legal part, I, I think we'll be, we'll be okay.
Um, and Cheryl, the next one is HR.
Yes, um, as you can see, it's only a one percent increase. Um, basically, that's based around, uh, salaries and four oh one. Um, in regards to our outside payroll, we did see an increase in that because of the increase in staff in the town clerk's office for the election. Um, so we should see that go down, uh, next year, but other than that, everything pretty much stays the same.
IT have a one, sorry.
Who do we use for payroll processing?
ADP.
ADP. And 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 you do you bid that out every three to five years?
We do. We are. We're actually in a three year contract with them that will end this year, and then we will go back out. We also have munis in house, which we will look at when this contract runs out.
Okay, thanks.
IT, I did see Chris at one point, but IT is going up one point seven percent. The driver in IT, and Cheryl, you could speak to this. We did do a salary adjustment for one individual within the department. And so that is a driving, that's that one point six percent in personnel costs. Town clerk is not, I don't see. That's one of these numbers is Claudia. I don't see Claudia on on here. Town clerk is going up six and a half percent. The driver for that increase in this proposal is a contract for reduction redaction services. Register voters.
Are we gonna hear more about that contract or?
I'm sorry?
Hear more about that contract? Or no? The the forty six thousand dollars for the the contract service?
I don't know. Is Claudia on? I had.
I thought we're gonna take this up Thursday, Linda.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Town registrar voters is is going down six percent. You know, they had spiked obviously this year because of elections and whatnot. And therefore, where they budgeted at more normal numbers from historical. So that that's where that is. And land use is going up one percent. I do see Tiger and the land use team on the call. I'm gonna toss this out to you, Tiger.
Thanks, Linda. The the only market increase we have is. In our, excuse me, our professional services line. And that's for some mandated studies that need to be performed by the Planning and Zoning Department. The rest is all incremental changes. I think Brian did a very nice job preparing this budget.
What are what are the mandated services?
Lynn, could you elaborate?
Hi, good morning. So. One of the things in July of seventeen, the Connecticut passed a requirement for all municipalities in the state of Connecticut to prepare an affordable housing plan that. Needs to be submitted by July of twenty twenty two. So and in late December, the state just came out with the outlines of what has to be done in that plan. And I've gone out and asked a couple of consultants for general estimates. And that's like a thirty thousand dollar report to prepare. All one hundred and sixty nine municipalities in Connecticut are required to do it. So that's sort of sent it up. And the other the other one that's sending it up is that we. New Canaan currently has an affordable housing moratorium under eight thirty G. And that's going to expire on June fifth of twenty twenty one. And we're currently currently looking at if that we have if we have the capability to go for a second one. And the cost for doing that in the in this fiscal year is gonna cost us between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars just on estimates of what we spent the last time in two thousand seventeen when we got our moratorium. And just speaking to other communities on what they've spent to get it done recently.
So those two items add up to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars or?
Well, then we also have in that in that budget line is also current stuff like our GIS contract. We're currently, yeah, we're currently engaged in a parking study right now, which might carry over.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it, Linda. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have health department, excuse me, health department year over year. It is showing a nine point seven percent. The driver there is we did add a sanitarian position this year. That wasn't there when we adopted the budget last year. There is also. An additional for part time compensation. For that is also the sanitary compensation. We have, Jen has also provided some additional overtime expenses year over year. Last year, we were at five. This year, the request is at fifteen. Part of that just has to do with with workload and some of that is COVID related. So those are the drivers of of that increase. And that puts them at nine point seven percent. The Conservation Commission, and I see Chris on the call, is actually, they have two components. There's an operating budget, and then they also have a capital, which Tiger discussed when he presented his capital budget for the Bristol Sanctuary. The operating portion is actually twenty four thousand going down a thousand dollars this year. Chris, if you can hear me and if you can comment, if you have anything to add to that. Okay, the next is parking, and I think I saw Stacy on the call. The parking budget is actually going down eight and a half, eight and a half percent year over year. That's driven by turnover. They have one less than forty going into next year, having moved from parking to public works, I think now fire. But go ahead, Stacy.
Unmute.
You're on mute.
I'm sorry, I thought I unmuted. The only line item that went up this year is our service contract. Line item, the reason being is one of our LPR software programs came off of warranty. So I had to add in the annual cost of the maintenance contract for that software program. All the other line items were kept steady, or I was able to bring down some line items due to the loss of one staff member. The revenue figures. I was very conservative with my figures due to COVID. So I kind of underestimated on tickets and meters and parking permits. Actually, parking permits, I kind of kept the same just in case fiscal year twenty two. We did. Plan on renewing parking permits. I wasn't sure where we were going, but that I kind of kept steady. But everything else I underestimated. If things change dramatically, that would be great. If not, I was basing those figures on a gradual change over fiscal year twenty two. The only other item that I did request for twenty two is a capital item. And it is a, excuse me, let me just grab it. It is.
Seventy four.
I'm sorry?
No, I was just letting the selectmen know that capital is on page seventy four.
The only other item that I did request this year was an upgrade to both my license plate reader software programs. Because we did lose one staff member. This upgrade to both program, this upgrade to both programs would allow the two members of the department to do both timed parking and permit parking. So that that they don't have to keep these two programs separate. Chris and I were on the phone with the representative today. Chris was wonderful, I have to say. He asked one of the representatives. Why it was the representative, why it was thirteen six? And and one of the answers was the program, our permit program needed to be upgraded. And with that discussion, they were not aware that I have a maintenance software contract that should automatically upgrade any of our software programs. So we're hoping that it could possibly bring this down three thousand dollars, maybe a little bit more. So my request for thirteen six might actually be brought down, hopefully to maybe ten six. They're working on that right now. So it could be a drop of three thousand dollars because they were not aware that I do have a maintenance software program. Other than that.
Stacy, is Stacy on the revenue side? The line item for for permits?
Yep.
I mean, are we confident that there's gonna be a return to normal in terms of the permits? Because because I think I think I think I think the, you know, the plug that you got in is six hundred and fifty thousand, which is kind of back to normal.
Right.
Maybe a little less. I just I I'm just concerned. About that number.
And and what I mentioned, I I cut, I did keep it. Pretty level on the fact that if we did go back to renewing the permits for the fiscal year. My feeling is even though people are not commuting and they might not be commuting. Just at that time, they will renew if we do go back to renewing permits. That is the feeling that I am getting from the questions that from people who have current permits. That they might not be going back right away. But if renewals do happen, they will renew their permit on the, based on the fact that they will at some point in twenty two go back to, or the end of twenty one, twenty two, go back to commuting.
And presumably, now, you know, maybe they only go into the office two days a week as opposed to five days a week.
Correct.
And so you're saying like, if that happens, if they go, even if they go one day a week, they'll keep the permit.
Yes, that that's my feeling. And I do have many new people moving into town requesting a permit. When we go back to normal, or shall I say, when we do decide that we are going to move forward with renewals, they will be requesting a permit.
Is that? Indicative of, I mean, is it bigger than it would have been in the past or? I mean, I obviously we're not. Charging for permits now.
I'm in your camp. I we we have no idea what's gonna happen and, you know.
Right.
No matter what we plug in here, it's not gonna be accurate, so.
Yeah, like I said, I.
I suspect we're not gonna have wait lists anymore, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's the good news.
Yeah. Like I said, I didn't, that one I did keep a little steady. I did go down from the previous year about twenty five thousand, but. You know, I I did keep it steady with the fact that if we do go to renewals, most people will renew, even if they're not using it five days a week.
Stacy, what about the the cost for the pay by phone? What what where does that fall in? I think was it, how much was it, twenty five thousand a month, something like that? What was the number?
No, Kathleen, Kathleen, it should be nothing as long as the minimum is paid by the users.
No additional cost.
The two fifty is the minimum paid for by the users. If we, you know, we could be hit with twelve, twelve thousand dollars a year. If or fourteen thousand dollars, if if nobody paid the minimum, if nobody was.
Okay.
Right, and never seen that happen at the, when we had at the train station, I we have never had to.
We're adding the municipal lots, there's even more of an opportunity to meet that.
All right, okay, thank you.
On the expense side, the only, the two remaining ones are dead service. And the dead service is plugged at what the current, that's on page thirty one. What the current debt service debt service levels are based on our current amortization schedule. As I mentioned last week, we are looking at a potential refunding opportunity that may impact debt service in FY twenty two. So if it does, we will adjust that number down. And we may see some additional savings there as a result of debt service, depending on when when we go out. And so it may be a FY twenty two impact, or it could be FY twenty three impact. But depending on when we close on the bomb, we could be adjusting that debt service, the debt service number. And I believe those are all the general fund expenditures. The general fund also have a couple of departments that I, as I mentioned, that book revenue. Stacy was one you you heard from. We do have a couple of statutory grants that we get. These are on page eight that we book within the finance department. We don't know what those numbers are. We kept them flat because we've had some assurances from the governor that we're gonna be held harmless. And so we've kept those and at those levels. The one number I will say that that we are looking at is the interest on investment. We're going through now a process of, we're going through an RP process right now for banking and investment services. Part of that process is also analyzing our balances and the interest income we're getting from those balances. So we're going to be reviewing that number. Right now, we have a plug number in there, but I suspect that that number will change when we get to the Board of Finance based on the information that we get as we move along. And I believe that's all I have for general government. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you may have.
I'd like to go back, Linda, to the first like in budget because I didn't realize. The administrative officer put together this budget. I really didn't look at it. And then I, you know, when you highlighted meals and entertainment, I I'd like to point out that that's a budget that I do not spend. I think that's, you know, we we have employee breakfast out of that. And and I think holiday, holiday events. But I don't think since I've been first like, and I've had a personal meal or a travel expense. And so I I I kind of wasn't aware we had that line out. I don't have a credit card like Linda does, so.
I don't either.
I don't either.
You're right, that is, I think there's some things that are on here that are not the first selection office expense. I think that that's one example. There are some time townwide membership, like the membership to CCM and so forth. Those are paid out of your budget, but they're not necessarily your office's expenses. Economic development is is another one where for accounting purposes, we include that in your budget, but it's not necessarily a first selectman, first selections office expense.
Do other, do other budgets have meals, meals and entertainment?
No.
Okay, again, that's something the Pam controls, and it's usually primarily for.
Right, that's townwide.
For needs of town employees, so.
Where does the cost for Zoom come in? Is that on your voice data?
It's insignificant, Kathleen.
Is it?
Yeah.
For all of the activities we do? Okay.
Yeah, what budget hit, does it hit, Linda?
And I believe we're hitting IT for that budget.
You are.
We are, okay.
But it's.
I knew you were there somewhere.
I think we have four accounts, Chris, and what is it, a thousand dollars altogether?
Yeah, I think maybe a little more than that, but yeah, it's very insignificant, like you said.
Tiger has his own account, but I, you, is that you pay that personally, Tiger?
Pay that personally?
Oh, no, he's on the IT's budget too.
On the right.
Chris, I I I called your name, but I don't think you heard me. On the capital, you're you're the only other general fund department that has capital. You and parking and your capital is mainly software. It's remained the same year over year.
Yes, this year we see because we've got, with the virtualization program is out almost ten years now. There's gonna be some change out in some of the desktops and the new performance, such as the problem we're having with Zoom with some of the desktops. So there'll be some some hardware change outs, so that's why it's up about five thousand.
That guy, just occurred to me that Tucker, why don't you address the economic development budget? Because the TDEC committee advises on how to use that. But and you could briefly report on the on the TDEC committee's activities?
Yeah, we were gonna come before you in February and give you a rundown of what we've been doing. We have a meeting this Thursday night where we have broken out into working groups, if you will. You all have supported initiatives such as the Live New Canaan campaign that has been extremely successful on a number of fronts. You've supported a a grant for Channel seventy nine. We're working now on a neat feature called Autocast, Autocast, which we'll be talking about this Thursday evening. And as well as the October for Design, which was scheduled for this past October. Due to COVID, it's where there was a soft launch, if you will. And now it will be this following, the the October two thousand twenty one. due to COVID, it's, uh, where there was a soft launch, if you will, and now it will be this following, the, the, uh, October two thousand twenty-one, a whole month-long campaign celebrating the mid-moderns in our town. Um, so we'll, we'll go further into detail with you, um, on that in February, but um, one of the areas that we struggle with, if you will, is how to spend the money, how to, uh, take in grant requests and, and make decisions on that. People seem to come to us all throughout the year, so we're working on that part of it as well, but um, it's a minimal budget, but it's one that we've never had before until, um, uh, for the last year, so we're thrilled to have this committee working towards, uh, bringing, you know, economic development to town and strategies and things like that. It's a brief summary, but as I say, we'll, we'll come before you with a further report in February.
So we're gonna break for lunch. Thank you, Tucker, and, um, come back for EMS and OEM?
Yes.
At one fifteen?
Uh.
Yes, one fifteen. I tried to move them up, but they had several meetings planned, so we're gonna keep it with what we are.
So we will resume at one fifteen. Um, so I'm motioned to adjourn, I guess, and we, actually, we're not really we're paused.
Breaking.
Pause, take a lunch break. All right, see you one fifteen, thank you.
Thanks.
Session at twelve. One sixteen? Hi there, Nancy and Barb.
Hi, Kevin.
Hello.
Good to see you. Chris Shipper. Phil Shively, where's Russ Keim's playing on the phone?
Uh, he's, he's on.
He's on, just, yeah.
Who's next?
I see him.
We're going with, uh, Nick back, Nancy and Barb and team.
Terrific.
I think Nancy, why don't you, you go ahead because you're more skilled at this.
Okay, EMS.
Right, so for the general fund, hopefully you've got your spreadsheet that shows, um, we have three controllable items on this report. Uh, one is the paramedic contract, which is a fixed five-year fee, so we're still in that and there's no increase from last year. That's the three hundred ninety-nine thou. Uh, the next one is what we call town contribution, and that is your contribution to cover our ambulance repairs and medical supplies. And we were kind of under the impression that we should keep that at zero this year, so we did not go up. We definitely spend more than that, but we use our, uh, town, our contributions to cover the remainder. So, um, obviously this is not the full cost of running the operation, um, certainly for supplies and during COVID. And then the last item at the very bottom is IS or our CMed contract, which is our, um, agency within the state of Connecticut to oversee and monitor all ambulance transports and movements between hospitals, as, as well as a separate contract to oversee our medical dispatch, so a nine-one-one call that is routed over to CMed, and then they work with us as our dispatcher. So between those two services, the fee for next year has been, um, published specifically for New Canaan to be the fifty-seven thou. So that is their minimal increase. Uh, I don't believe they've ever published an amount for each of the municipalities and then charged more in the actual year, so they're gonna probably hold fast to that. So those would be the three controllable items. Everything else has been put in by the, um, the department that provides that service to us.
I have a question, Nancy. I don't understand why the town contribution has been going down.
Well, the, the, um, going back a couple of years, we were asked to try to reduce our budget by a small percentage, and so we followed that directive and essentially just said we would pay for more of our supplies. It, our need was still there, but we were trying to follow, um, a directive from Town Hall. Um, and then there was a, a, a revised number, and it was really just an error last year. When the number got entered, the math was done incorrectly. So the adjust, adjustment that was made during the budget process was really just to correct the math.
I just, thank you, Nancy. Um, great. Um, just two questions. The paramedic service, just remind me, is that a contract with Norwalk Hospital?
That is right, yes. For the, for the paramedic that is here twenty-four by seven.
Okay, for how long does that contract last?
Well, it's a five-year contract, fixed, fixed cost, and I think we're going into our last year.
Twenty-three.
Okay, we have
Next one.
Twenty-three is
The last, the last one is in this future budget, but it would have to be renegotiated the year after. Great.
Yeah, I remember, I remember voting on it. Did we, we, um, did we looked at Stanford, right?
Every time we've, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We do consider them, and we get a quote.
Right.
Right.
But Norwalk's worked out pretty well, right?
Well, we're, we're very happy with their service.
And then just remind me, and I might be wrong about this, are you guys getting the benefit of any solar panels yet, or no? No, we ha, we haven't considered?
Barb, Barb works.
Well, yeah, they have, uh, done, I think, some sort of preliminary estimates as far as, I don't know about solar panels, but I know that they've, um, done the LED lighting.
Okay.
Transfer.
Yeah, you're a relatively new roof. I, I don't know, recall hearing any discussion about your building.
We'd be open to it if that, you know, if that's within the plan.
That's not a bad idea.
Be concerned with looking at Kevin.
Right.
Okay, and then, um, I'd like to go back to the town contribution. I don't understand. So we bounced back up to fifty-three thousand from what was last year. An actual of only thirty, am I reading that right?
Happy year.
Nineteen seventeen, but you're saying there's other expenses that, uh, you're, you're picking up with donations? Such as, you know, what? That we were as high as sixty thousand dollars.
Right, so that's when we started getting mandates that we should reduce our budget amount?
But your budget increase is only point one percent.
Well, yes.
That may, that may go back when we were trying to keep, stay at two percent, and you, you perhaps, overall, you were prepped. I don't know why we wouldn't look to not dip into your donations if they're legitimate maintenance.
Yeah, right, they're definitely legitimate. These are real things that we purchase and repairs that we make. Um, but we were just trying to be good citizens. We knew that the town was asking that, I think it was being a, a reduction of three percent is one thing I remember hearing.
Yeah, that's what we were kind of under the, um, operating assumption.
We're, we're going back maybe three or four years, right?
Yeah, Linda, can you explain this? Did you have a review with, uh, Barbara, Nancy on, on the budget?
Yes, we reviewed their budget, um, and we basically, we have basically funded what's been requested since I've been here.
But, okay, but you didn't ask for enough this year.
Uh, that's what it seems like. So, so this
I mean, the ambulance service is our, is our most admirable service. I mean, in terms of what you contribute versus, uh, versus what we pay. I would, I would think if you, if you're using donations to pay for operating expenses, that why don't we bump that up a bit?
Well, we'd be happy to do that, and I, and I honestly, when we sent out an appeal, it's really a letter, a sort of an update, and it's a gentle ask. We get an amazing response, mostly, you know, often from people who have been helped by our services. Um, and, uh, you know, I don't know in fairness if, uh, everyone understands that we were paying for things like, um, medical supplies or uniforms that the town used to pay for. But we have been, I think, very, um, efficient in our purchasing of all this, all these things, and, um, you know, we're careful. So if, uh, the town wants to kick in more money for things like medical supplies, which, as you can imagine, we're well into, um, more, much more than we anticipated it for budgeting for medical supplies, but.
I mean, if you were fully costed, the cost of yours, your donated, uh, time for your volunteers, this would be a million and a half dollar budget or two million dollars.
Yeah.
Well, and that wouldn't include salaries if that, if that's what you're adding, but, um.
I'm, Kathleen and, and Nick, I'm, with, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm actually kind of in shock that we're not fully funding your operational budget, because I agree with, I mean, Kevin's right, I mean, you I don't think anybody in this town gives back more in terms of service hours, just sheer hours, than, um, Nick back. And so I agree with you, Kevin, I think we should, you know, y- you stop dipping, dipping into whatever you're dipping into, and I have a question about that. Do you guys have an endowment? I, I should know this, but.
No.
So I didn't think so.
It's an operating budget based on donations.
So one percent, one percent of your budget would be fifty-three thousand? I'm, I'm fifty-three hundred? Yes? Your, your, your overall, your overall budget is fif, is five fifty-three. So one percent would be fifty, fifty-five hundred. So why don't you go to two percent and pick up another eleven thousand dollars or so?
Well, that, that might cover
Uh, I mean, Nancy might, uh, have some history on this, or perhaps even Phil. We used to include line items of, of items that were previously funded by the town, and we had over the course of the last maybe ten years or more or less been asked to, uh, fund those things ourselves, cost of uniforms. Which we, it's probably ten thousand dollars a year.
Well, Barb, what I would, uh, what I would suggest to, to make it quick is, I'd go with Kevin's suggestion, do a, a two percent increase in the overall for another eleven. And then, uh, we can do some analysis and next year maybe come back to you guys with an assessment of what it would take to do a, you know, full coverage of medical supplies and some of those kinds of things.
That sounds great. I, I, I mean, I, I would love to see that, and I would suggest that any, uh, and I would certainly support an increase by the town's contribution and whatever the difference is in terms of your donations annually, if any of those that you, you perhaps don't need because of this increase, consider, as, as, uh, Nick just pointed out, consider creating an endowment.
Endowment. Good idea.
Growing that.
I think that, yeah, that's exactly right. But we should, as a town, it should be our job to fund you on an operational basis, year to year, fully, hundred percent, whatever that number is.
Great.
Well, much appreciated. We, we were just trying to be good citizens when you asked us to keep flat.
I don't think it was us.
You're too good, Nancy.
Back in eighteen, if you were, you were sixty thousand nine hundred, sixty thousand nine hundred fifty-four nine, I mean, I think you ought to back, bump back up to sixty-one thousand or
I think that was you, Kevin, but I'm just
That was the year that the board of finance said two percent, but your, your other expenses must have been up. So that got, that, that, that got whittled down to keep within the board of finances two percent.
Well, your CMed went up, I see that, so.
That goes up every year.
Alright.
And the paramedic contract in the future will take a bump, and the rest would be the line item that you're calling town contribution.
Let's increase that to by ten thousand, eleven thousand dollars, make it sixty, sixty-four thousand?
That's beautiful.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else?
Well, yes, we have in the capital plan, one item. I don't know if you have to turn to a different page for that. Okay, so in the five-year plan, for the, for this upcoming new fiscal year, we've requested sixty-five thousand to purchase a new SUV that is used as the paramedic fly car.
Which is, uh, changed, that is changed up usually every five?
Five to six years is our plan. Now it stays in service twice as long because we have a backup vehicle, and the backup is used as a backup when the paramedic's vehicle has to go in for service or somehow out of commission, and also for town events, fire standbys, and community activities where we only need an SUV and not a whole ambulance.
So how long do you keep that vehicle?
So, so it's first used as a fly car for the paramedic, and then it rotates uh, as a backup unit and the other functions I mentioned. Altogether, it would be about thirteen years. The current one, if, if we're allowed this sixty-five thousand expenditure in the new fiscal year, which would actually be at the end of the fiscal year, we usually get it in the spring, it will have been in service about fourteen years.
So we're getting our monies out, out of the vehicles, and this is a bondable item, sixty-five thousand, Linda? Linda?
We're not hearing him.
Oh, here, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sixty-five thousand would be bondable?
Let me double check.
But we're gonna keep a vehicle for ten or twelve or fourteen years, I mean.
A, Kevin?
Right now, we have it, we have it as bondable.
Yeah.
So Kevin, just, uh, to make it even more compelling, uh, the, uh, the car that's rotated back as a backup, uh, the last one then got rotated to CERT, uh, for use as a utility vehicle for them. And, and they're looking to do the same thing, so they're dying to have us replace one this kind of year, so we get a lot of years out of that thing.
That's great, because we don't even have to mention this in our budget now, we're just saying that that's the long plan. Well, you know, I, I, again, I, I think the ambulance corps is the most admirable group we have in town, and I, I for one appreciate everything you do, and, um, and your contribution of your volunteer hours is astounding, so.
Yeah.
Nancy, could you talk about, we had a discussion yesterday regarding the, um, the, um, the taxes.
Abatement, yes.
Abatement, yes. We had a meeting yesterday to talk about the logistics of the abatement and how we were going to, um, to funnel that, um, and you have, um, I believe you've approved um, a X number of qualified eligible residents and non-residents um, that are to receive that, maybe share with the board, uh, what, what the numbers are and, and so forth, so that they're also
Well, uh, I, I don't have the exact numbers, but, um, we are trying to take advantage of this program in the current tax year, which is gonna be a little tough. Um, uh, but certainly it would be in place so that people are able to make the full, uh, or take the full advantage of it for the July twenty twenty-one period. But Phil and Russ were the authors of this, and I think they probably have more details than I do, and so if they, either one of them wants to just do a brief overview?
Well, I mean, I, I think the, uh, selectmen are, are well aware of it from our earlier discussions, and, uh, Russ, you can confirm for FD, but I know with EMS, the number of qualified individuals is within the number that we had presented as the, as the sort of maximum when we, we first put this in front of the selectmen and town council, so, uh, um, I don't know if you want to know other details about it or not, but, uh, yeah, go ahead.
Can you just give me a sentence or two, because I, I
Yeah, so
They shared that before I joined, so.
Yeah, so, um, so, so the state actually has a, uh, sort of an umbrella, um, approval in place that allows towns to do an abatement up to a certain amount. Currently, it's fifteen hundred dollars per year that moves to two thousand, I think, in the following year. Um, for volunteer individuals, uh, who are doing a first responder kind of role, so FD and EMS in our case. Uh, the tax abatement can be applied to, you know, any kind of property, so whether that's a home you own or a vehicle or what have you. So, uh, uh, we presented that, uh, New Canaan is, uh, pretty much the only town in our, in Fairfield County who hasn't had that, uh, in place, uh, for five, ten, sometimes, uh, twelve years. And, uh, so we rolled that through the town, including the ordinance subcommittee drafted up and got approval for an ordinance to, uh, start, uh, executing on that this, uh, this year.
Right?
Yep.
Sounds terrific.
Super. Um, hey, while, while we have you folks, and again, I echo Kevin's comments about you know, unprecedented, how much time and effort you guys put into, uh, to Nick back, but um, will you lose something institutionally if the police department were to physically relocate?
Yes, we would. Uh, so we've, we've had some internal discussions on that, uh, Nick, uh, there really is a lot of benefit from having uh, that sort of side-by-side location, uh, given how closely we work together and the, uh, you know, the ability to, uh, to be able to interact and use each other's facilities for things and some of those uh, aspects. So, uh, so yeah, I, I do believe that we'd, uh, you know, be losing something if they were located somewhere that was uh, not adjacent like not adjacent like it is today. Is that, is that something that's still being considered?
Yeah, I mean Leon was on earlier and obviously we've got a, you know, a committee that's, that's looking at what to do with the PD. You know, one of the options is to stay and refurbish. But another option is to, I think Leon's preference, and I, and I understand why, is to move it to a secondary location. But I, I just, it just came to me that, you know, whenever I'm over at PD, which is often enough, you know, I just see people kind of walking, you folks walking around and parking lot and sometimes come in. And so I, I just, you know, I'm glad I asked the question.
Yeah, well, one possibility though is to build a new building behind the current building with underground parking for the.
Right, right.
Uh huh, okay.
And that would keep it right next door.
I mean, in my opinion, the location of the police department is as good as it gets in town. Doesn't mean we should have to stay there.
Right.
I, I guess you guys wouldn't want to move because the location is such a, right? No, but you've got, you've got access to the merit in, in, you know, a million and a half.
Yeah, it's right. Geographically, you know, both are in a pretty good spot relative to response, I would agree.
Um, just back to the, the endowment, if you can put it, does Silver Hill contribute on a regular basis to Nickback?
They do, and they're, they're, it varies, honestly, it varies. But they do as a, as a donation from a facility.
Right. Thanks.
Has your, has your calls, have they been, been equal to previous years, higher, lower?
We are, call volume for twenty twenty?
Yeah.
Started at a great volume and in the middle of the year, in the middle of the high point of COVID, people did not want to go to the hospital. So it dipped. But in the end, we were about fifteen hundred calls. Which is.
Compared to Big Fryer, just curious.
Right in line, right in line with our usual call volume.
Thank you.
Anything else? I think you're. Again, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Bye. We're signing off. We're done. You're done with us?
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. I'm confused as to why Chris Shipper is here. Did we slip the Conservation Commission in, in here?
No, he, he missed it. He stepped out before to get a sandwich and he missed when we talked about it. So now I think he's just staying on to be entertained. Yes, Chris?
I'm fascinated at how a government works. Conversations.
He wants his additional ten thousand from Kevin.
Do you want, do you want more money, Chris, too?
No, I think, actually, I think we can live with the twenty four thousand. And I'm appreciative of all the support that Tiger Man gives to the Conservation Commission in terms of, we have to send little checks out to various places. So it's been very helpful. So I'm, I'm. Yeah, I think so. I think it'll go down for the next two years as well. There's some spending to get ready for the plan of conservation and development. Once that's done, it'll, it'll settle down again.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys. Thank you all. Thanks for your help.
Thanks, Chris.
Next is emergency management. Russ, are you here?
I am here. Hello, everyone. Thank you for taking some time to meet with us all. Kind of, and I, Phil and I just acknowledged that we both obviously go to the same tailor as we are wearing the OEM official uniform today, apparently. So I will share my screen. I have a very, very basic presentation. I'm hoping to move through this quickly for you all, obviously. I know it's been a long day of these for you. So our operating budget, everybody's able to see the screen? Excellent. Operating budget, the biggest difference here is the reduction in the onsite contractors line. And we'll get into the explanation as to why that occurred, but this has to do with the town radio infrastructure after the town made a significant investment to improving our emergency as well as municipal radio network. There was, there is a program that Motorola has, which a number of our peer towns are using, which has to do with a, basically it's an amortized fee over a fixed period of time that they replace hardware and software. That was originally, I think it came up very late in the budget cycle last year. So it was added to the budget. So that went up that one year to one hundred and sixty because that was the thought that that was to cover it. It was, the decision to go for that contract was not made. So that's why there was so much unspent in this line. And in discussions with Lunda and Kevin and others, as well as with John D. Fredricco, Stuart Sarabini and the other subject matter experts on communications, and we'll show you in a second. It is our recommendation, we do use this contract going forward. We'll get into why, but it's under capital. So I'll come back to that when we get to capital. I just wanted to explain why we had a ninety six percent reduction in one line there. The remaining lines are pretty straightforward. It's a small organization. Training is used for, we're required, we're required to do an annual training exercise amongst the departments. This is for, the state requires it in FEMA, as well as FEMA. And it's, you know, it's, we've typically done things like active shooter response in schools. Obviously with coronavirus this year, that didn't happen. There was a lot of turnover, in fact, we couldn't do it in person. So we are aiming to do that again next year. And those funds allow us to facilitate it. And so that's pretty much it for training. Also, any professional development training for Phil or myself, the FEMA classes, whenever they restart again down in, I believe in Maryland. Repairers emergency equipment is a small line, but we do have several pieces of equipment that have been given to us by the state of Connecticut through Demus, including an animal shelter trailer, a person shelter trailer, and two electronic signboards, which you've probably seen all over town. And there is some maintenance that goes along with those. Also, the, the town owns an incident command trailer, a mobile command trailer that can also serve as a backup emergency operations center. God forbid, we were unable to access the police department. While it is, it is, it is at the end of its life, these funds are used to just keep everything we have going. So that's what the repairs emergency equipment. Also, even though CERT doesn't, I think officially fall under OEM, they've always been a partner with us as the organization that, you know, if they do a call out, OEM is the EMD, Emergency Management Director is the one who would sign that authorization. So we also handle the repairs for their, the CERT vehicle, which as you learned today, is a, a end-of-life paramedic fly car. So continuing to make the most use out of the vehicles inventory in the town. Supplies is straightforward, voice data we get provided. And then equipment emergency is up year over year. The reason is we shuffled some lines here. First is the emergency line will have, we put a little extra in there to relabel. Hopefully when EMS, if provided they get approved, we will relabel their old fly car when it gets moved to us. We have EOC, the EOC, the actual operations center itself, and PD has laptops and tablets and things like that that we use in the mitigation of emergencies. As I'm sure you're aware, this is the longest that the EOC has been open and active, I think in its history. It has been since March that the EOC has been active. So it helps to sustain that. We're also looking to engage a new GIS provider. Actually, it'll be on this year's budget, just to, but just to provide some light as to these activities for mapping trees down, wires down, road closures. So looking very exciting there. And then the, the only other line is, oh, where is it? Sorry, I'm just looking here. Actually, it is in the same line, is the UASI radio sustainment fee, which basically we're, we use, all of the departments, police, fire, and EMS have access to a thing called UASI. It's a, it's a radio network based off of the state police band. And we have a subscription fee and that's set forth by the state. So that's just us paying our dues. So that's operating. I'll pause there. The other part to the equipment emergency that was up is we're also trying to get some equipment for CERT team. They have asked us for help to get high-visibility winter jackets because their folks were out doing the animal shelter, helping with the dogs there and it was very cold and we want to make sure they're appropriately equipped. Things like some high-visibility road signs for road closures when they're helping us with mitigating road closures during severe weather and things like that. And some minor shelving countertop stuff for them. So that was, that's another reason why that line went up. Anything on operating? Phil, anything to add?
No, that's good.
All right. Capital, for capital, the Motorola Radio Hardware and Software Update Agreement. So I, I won't go into this, I happen to answer questions. I will give you the best summary I can. There are with three ways you can maintain your radio. The first is that you can have a, the all-in Motorola contract, which basically says that the hardware and software, and in many cases they're proprietary, are replaced as they're needed to be replaced as part of this all-in contract, and you never need to worry about it. If you were to not do this at all, at some point, and this is the hard part, and we've been working with NORCOM, who has been pressuring Motorola to give us transparency, better transparency on this as well. And actually NORCOM has been a very good ally of ours and we're still working with them to improve our understanding of why this is such a high number. But long story short, at a fixed point in time in the future, and we don't know when, a piece of hardware, and we know that in the next couple of years, for example, that there will be changes to the consoles and routers that are used within the communications infrastructure, that the hardware will have to be replaced. And when that hardware has to be replaced, it may not support the software version at that time, right? There's sunsets of software. It's just like, you may not be able to use Windows ME anymore, or Windows seven, or Windows XP, you know, it no longer is supported. So the problem becomes that we have, are unable to estimate what that cost would be in the future. So what Motorola has done is basically amortize that over a long schedule. And you'll see on our next slide here. If the value comes down, the cost comes down substantially in the out years. The reason it's higher this year is because we didn't pay the first year. So they're lumping it in, in essence. NORCOM has told us that most of our peers that are similar to us have opted into the, this program. Although all of us, and we're, we haven't had the time or opportunity yet, but we're going to be meeting with Trevor Roach down in Stanford and other municipalities to determine how best to, I think as a group, push Motorola, not only for greater transparency, but also to better understand exactly the pluses and minuses. If, you know, if you don't do this, what is the cost and when is it, right? I think that's the biggest problem we're having with this. So we currently are paying forty thousand for an agreement with NORCOM or Northeast Communications. And basically that is just if stuff breaks, they fix it. It does not replace hardware. It does not replace software. It is merely a service contract. The Motorola one, which is what we've requested for here in capital, is everything. It's service, it's proactive monitoring, which right now, the only way we know that nodes in our radio system go down is if a light shows up on a dispatch at police department and hopefully they see it. And they have procedures in place to monitor it, but this would be monitored by Motorola. They would proactively send people out to fix it. Plus, it's the software and hardware replacement at no cost to us. It just happens.
And a few other things, including, for example, the Motorola contract includes a loaner equipment, right? If something we own fails, you know, until they can actually replace it with a new one that we own, they'd immediately have somebody come out and put one, you know, a loaner in place so that we, we wouldn't be without our radio infrastructure. So it's got a bunch of benefits above just doing the fix, win, broke approach.
I'll be the first one to say that we are not happy about the lack of transparency. We're not happy that it's this big of a number, but we are working hard and pushing as our other municipalities to A, lower this and B, get better transparency. But the flip side is a very large capital expenditure that we can't guess in the future versus ensuring that we're keeping proactive replacement of our equipment and monitoring and the health of the system. It's a tough one. The other two items, just, and I'll, and we'll go to questions just after that. The other two items are much smaller. A variable message sign, which in partnership with Tiger and Public Works, we use those everywhere. Every time we have a major event, when we set up, for example, when we are able to hopefully scale up our vaccination distribution, to have those electronic signs, which look like these, to be able to help with traffic control, informing people where to go, the lane structure, whatever it might be. Or during major events, or just as a means to mass communicate, they're enormously useful to us. So we would like to acquire one of those. And then the other is generator packs. We wish to purchase what we call five packs, which is one generator, one fuel can, and an extension cord. And the intention for this is during long duration, weather incidents with long-duration power outages, Tiger and Highway have offered to, in partnership with FD, that if we have elderly impaired, they're, they're off of power, they may have medical equipment, whatever it might be, that we're able to at least provide some sort of a stopgap until we can get a longer term solution, be it moving them to, helping them get to a family or a hotel or whatever it might be. But in this case, we'll at least have this availability to deal with it right then and there. And ensure that, that, that they're safe. So I will stop there for questions.
I'm sorry, Russ, go back to the capital for the.
Yes, sir. The out years or the current year?
Current year. So why are we talking about the out years? Tax support. Oh, oh, I see. The electronic sign is twenty thousand and the general package is sixty two fifty.
Yeah, and that's sixty two fifty is for five generators. We actually said it, so we wanted to get five now and five in four years, roughly, three years.
It's an expensive sign. Any questions? I'm going to leave you to Mr. Lavier on your, on your Motorola contract because he's a technology expert and consultant and.
And we're really hoping we'll have more. I mean, we're going to partner with other municipalities to really dig at Motorola to get more clarity and drive this price down as best we can.
Hey Russ, we've got two signs. This would be a third.
That's correct. The two signs we got from the state are not what we call very, they can do text and things. They cannot do graphics. But they're very similar, very similar. They have solar panels. They are three sixty degree rotating, are easily trailed, towed by many of the vehicles. They only weigh like three thousand pounds. The ones that we have now, the keyboards are starting to fail, is my understanding. They're getting old. We are required by the state to maintain them, although I don't think we're going to be able to find parts for the old ones. So not only is this a incredibly useful tool, but it's one that's proactively positioning us for when those, if they potentially fail. Still on Tiger, anything, you helped us with the matrix board. I don't know if you have anything else you wanted to add on that?
No, you did a great job. We, we get more requests for these than we actually have machines. So that, that's the thought.
I think about anytime there's something at the YMCA, the big swim meets, or anything at the school, or the Fourth of July, or, I mean, these are incredibly useful.
One of them's been down the street for the last few weeks because of the bridge construction.
Yep.
I mean, what do we really need, five of them?
Tough to say. I mean, it depends on the size of the incident. We have two right now. I would say my personal bet would be four, because then you can have, at least get on all four corners of something. Tiger, I don't know if you have a strong feeling on this?
No, I like, four, four gives me two pair, right? So if you had two separate events, right? So yeah. That's something to work towards.
We have two now.
Right. And we were lucky to receive those. That was through Jack and, and the, you know, EOC as yourself, that we were able to get those. So we have primary use, but then we actually, they're not ours. If they're, if they're called for on a mutual aid, we have to give them off if we're not utilizing them.
That's correct.
Russ, you said that, thank you for all of this. You said that this is the longest-serving time that the EOC, I guess, has been open. And so what, what is, is that in the, in the police department, in the, if you will, the, well, I've been in there a million times, but that's where you're operating on a daily basis or?
So we're in a virtual mode because of the pandemic. We don't want, we're trying to not have everybody on top of each other. We have standing throughout the pandemic, it's either gone from one meeting a week to two meetings a week with, whether it's all the department heads or just a core working group of the doctors, the health department, the first selectman, and the captain of EMS. And it's logistics, it's planning, it's communication strategy, ensuring that we're also trying to leverage. I mean, the whole, one of the fundamental purposes of emergency management as a function is to ensure whole community response to events. So it's not just the town departments. It's nonprofits, it's companies in town, whatever we can do to make things happen. I think what we've seen with Wavine Healthcare and their stepping up is a fantastic example of that. We're also seeing other community events, groups jumping in to help, whether it was Grace Farms with the PPE distribution earlier on in the year. And all of that, EOC is the group that tries to get everybody together to collaborate, right? We're not dictating, we're, we're there to get everybody to work together to resolve issues. So yes, virtual, we are based out of PD. So we are hoping that when the PD gets redone, we can fundamentally improve our command center, which is what gets stood up during events because it is rather dated. And unfortunately, it's put in a conference room. So we carry a bunch of stuff from a closet. We, we have a closet right now. Because it is rather dated and unfortunately it's put in a conference room. So we carry a bunch of stuff from a closet. We, we have a closet right now. That's, that's really all OEM, the office is. It's a closet at PD. But we bring all of it out and a lot of it breaks when we do that. So we'd like to move towards a more permanent solution there.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Well, I've been listening these things for ten years. This is easily the most informative EOC budget presentation I've seen. So thank both of you guys, Phil and Russ. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I want to thank, go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, I was just going to say we'll, we'll look forward to the Lavieria gauntlet on the Motorola contract.
I would also note that, you know, we invested how much? Two point something, four million dollars?
Yeah.
In, in making our public safety radio. What's the term? Multi? They broadcast from all five locations now. We used to just broadcast from the Wavine Water Tank and the others were just receivers. So it made the equipment more complicated at each location because it's standalone should another fail.
That's right.
And so it is more complicated equipment. On the other hand, our prior public safety radio, we had for about fifteen years and we were spending about six thousand dollars a year on maintenance. It was either much more elementary equipment.
Or. The NORCOM woman was kind of responding to that quest, question from us, Kevin. And then, you know, rightfully pointing out that, you know, like it or not, emergency radio infrastructure has, you know, you know, developed along with everything else to where it's a lot of software versus it used to just be, you know, old style hardware with, as Russ liked to point out, vacuum tubes. So it's all, it's all highly integrated. And when, you know, one thing, you know, has to be replaced because it's out of date, that impacts and has a domino effect on the rest of it and all that kind of stuff, which is why it's hard to project what it would cost to replace it in another couple of years, right?
But the benefits of this system are massive compared to where we were before. I can tell you, I've been out in the field during major events, had the radio in my hand at a major incident and our radios just go down. And you use, no one would know why. You'd have to go to the Wavine, actually to the tower to try to restart it. So it's, there is a reason, there's a lot of benefits to the system and we're very thankful that the town put that, that commitment to improve the infrastructure that was done. So now we got to maintain it.
I would also mention that Thursday morning, we're going to have a presentation by Home the Towers on our proposed new public safety tower on Upper Ponus Ridge.
Oh, great.
So you're about to launch that project?
Excellent.
We'll do that first thing Thursday morning. So with that, I want to thank you both gentlemen for your, your leadership and your, your, your commitment to this job. You're doing a terrific job and it's really been a great team effort. We appreciate both of you.
Happy to do it.
We appreciate it and it's been an honor and it's been, you know, it's a great group to work with. We have an incredible team that we work with, so.
Okay, does that conclude our agenda for today? Linda?
Yes, it does.
That does conclude for today. We're going to regroup again on Thursday. You'll have your regular meeting. We'll hear from DPW on buildings and the smaller funds that we didn't get through. And then human, Health and Human Services, Human Services, Bethany. And then we'll have a final review discussion and a vote.
Unless you think we need to add another day.
Or do we have anything else we haven't heard? Did you, any other departments we haven't heard? We had a summary.
Well, we've got everybody in on Thursday. So that, once we get through Thursday's presentations, we'll have heard from everybody. Sounds great.
Okay, we'll see you Thursday morning.
Thank you.
Everybody, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ball of favor, aye?
Aye. Thanks, everybody.
Bye, everybody. Thanks.
Bye.